All right, welcome everyone. We will call to order our Committee of the Whole meeting. And before we get started, I would like to acknowledge and recognize that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded territories of the Saschat and Hoopacassit First Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items from committee members? Seeing none, any late items from our corporate officer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No late items, but may I ask that there be a revision to the resolution under new business H six McLean Mill, that Resolution A, the dollar figure be changed from twenty thousand to fifty thousand. I will note that it is correct in the staff report. It just needs revision here. Thank you.
Thank you. And would somebody like to move approval of the agenda with the amendment? Thanks. Moved and seconded. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And before we go to adoption of minutes, I will go to Counselor Batola.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Wanted to take the opportunity to quote Steve Martin and say, I just flew in from Newfoundland and boy, my arms are tired. But having said that, I did want to let people know I am just back from Newfoundland. It was a wonderful time. And I wanted to give a shout out to a new friend of mine, Bob Hiscox, who is a counselor in the city of Grand Falls Windsor, which is a city very similar to Port Alberni. It's two towns that have been joined together. It's experiencing post-industrial pains. The development is on the fringes of town. Downtown is suffering. And it's a city that has a tie with Port Alberni, as Bob told me, that during the seventies and eighties, there were many people, families that came from Grand Falls to Port Alberni to work in the mill because, sorry, the paper mill, because both towns are centered around paper mills. So it was a very interesting time. Thank you.
Very interesting. Thank you for sharing. We'll go to adoption of minutes. And we have the minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on April 22nd, 2025, to be adopted as presented. Moved to adopt by Counselor Solder, seconded from Counselor Dame. Seeing no comments on the minutes. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And we'll move on to public input period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the committee. And we can take up to six speakers for up to five minutes each. For anyone participating electronically, there might be people online today. We will just use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to speak at this period of the meeting, and we'll call on you. Then I'll go to the gentleman at the front first.
There we go. The reason I'm here tonight, I'm, okay, first of all, I'm Matt Stabler. I'm a retired marine biologist, fisheries. I've lived in Port Alberni just over twenty some odd years, twenty-three years. Just so you know my background. The reason I'm here is to address the announcement that I received this afternoon of the gating of Solmas Park. The reason for this is several. First, we negotiated in good faith with federal fisheries for a series of years, conducted studies on one particular reach of this river that we could access Saukai for public angling. You just shut access off to that. There are a bunch of private residences in front on Service Road before that gate. On an average day during Saukai season, there will be forty vehicles in there. Could you imagine forty vehicles backed up on Service Road in front of those pub, those private owners? That's the first concern. The second concern, it's going to create a public hazard for those that want to fish that area. They're stuck. I mean, they have to walk a considerable distance. There's going to be traffic jams. I see potential confrontations with landowners as a consequence that are right there. I understand you did this for a cost savings initiative. I don't think you're going to save much considering the backlash. The second concern, this is the only public boat launch in that entire reach. Anybody that wants to launch a drift boat, a jet boat, a raft, tubes, et cetera, you are now forcing to go through Paper Mill Dam. Have you ever gone through Paper Mill Dam, guys? I have. And I'm a very experienced whitewater person. You don't want the general public doing that. This is a very, very serious safety concern. I've had a myriad of phone calls today. This was not on my agenda, trust me. A lot of the people couldn't be here, but they wanted me to express these concerns. I'm here, I'm asking you, insanity's sake, reconsider this decision. There are a lot of tourists. There are a lot of people that come from as far away as Victoria to fish that little tiny stretch of the river, and it's the only access they have. We fought long and hard to get that access. You guys are now denying that. It kind of hurts.
Thank you very much, Matt. Really appreciate you coming and speaking about it today. Because we don't always hear from the public. I mean, we did discuss this during budget, but people are not necessarily like engaged in that process. Then we don't necessarily hear these types of things. So really appreciate it. I did see some what I thought were really valid concerns and also potential solutions on social media today. So I think it's something that our council will be talking about in the very, very near coming days, or direct over to staff to look at some alternatives for. There is a budget savings associated with it, and I'm sure you can imagine, the park is not within the city limits. And so a part of the consideration was, you know, why is this a city, a city park and a city cost versus it being a regional district initiative? So.
I can understand your concern on the regional district aspect. However, I know of sixty or seventy anglers that go there that live here, myself included, and I pay taxes here.
Yeah, absolutely. And thanks for that. So it was a decision that council made. However, as I said, we appreciate your feedback, and it might be something that council changes. There could be alternatives, and sorry, just a moment. There could be alternatives that we can look at. And when people come and bring, you know, legitimate concerns, and also, as I said, I've seen on social media, what I would say, solvable problems that people have brought some really creative solutions to, then we're a council who are gonna listen, hear you, and, and work on an alternative. So I appreciate you coming today.
There's, there's a bunch of very, very concerned people. And I got calls as far away as Prince George from people that come and fish there. And I, I don't know what to tell them. I'm at a loss. I, I don't know what to tell them. I think the best decision you could make is to overturn that and find some way to, to fund the garbage pickup that was the big concern. This is affecting not a small segment of society, not a small segment of, of Port Alberni. It is affecting hundreds of people, including our tourism base. And it's a negative look for us. I just, I'm at a loss to understand the why.
Yeah, we had, we started with a twenty-six percent budget increase this year. So we really looked at legitimately everything we could do to bring that down, but appreciate your concerns completely. And, and we will work on an alternative if, if there is one available.
I'll be watching, and so will a lot of other people. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I do that a lot. I brought this up maybe a year ago or so. It's nothing that you don't know about, but I just thought it was worth to do it again. I calculate again, my tax, which has gone up to four thousand one, to four thousand one hundred dollars. My insurance is approximately fifteen hundred dollars. My utility is a hundred and twenty. It comes to six thousand and twenty dollars a year, which comes out to about five hundred and thirty dollars a month. Now, I understand the difficulties council has in balancing all the various things that you have to consider. And you're talking about a twenty-six percent increase. But I also see over the next few years, I can, I think we're going to be looking at double-digit figures again. And I have to ask my question, that how do young people in, in a municipality like this, we're probably not the only one facing this, how do they, how do, how can they possibly afford a house? That, right off the bat, I take five hundred and twenty, five hundred and thirty dollars out of my pocket to pay the city and my insurance company. That doesn't include my maintenance to make my house look as nice as it can in municipality. The roadwork certainly isn't being up cat to an extent that it should be in a fairly reasonable area. My house is a nineteen seventy-nine eighty house. It's not a luxurious place. It's nice. And so you add your maintenance to that, your mortgage. I don't know what the solution is to, to people in this, when there isn't really a lot of high-paying jobs to, in the future for dealing with this situation. And I'm not pointing fingers. I know it's a hard decision to make. How do you deal, I could bring up things I think should have been a priority over another. I'm not going to get into that. However, I don't know what, what the long-term or the short-term solution is here, except rentals, which are also the option that someone has because they can't buy a house. And that isn't a good option either. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak today? Yeah, come on forward. Thank you. All right. Then we will move on to delegations. And number one is B C Transit. And I think they're here virtually. Okay. Wonderful. Whenever you're ready, you can just go ahead and introduce yourselves and then start with your presentation.
Wonderful. My name's Seth Wright. I'm the Senior Manager of Government Relations. And I'm joined here today by, with Jacob Burnley, who's our transit planner serving Vancouver Island. We were here last, or sorry, I was here last about two years ago, when I was joined by Victor Capetti, the then transit planner. We've had, we've had turnover and, and Jacob has taken the reins. This is a transit future service plan for Port Alberni, which encompasses both the conventional system and the custom system, and also envisions a future where the regional district may contribute more to the existing conventional fixed route system. So there are some recommendations that, that address them. We've had conversations with senior staff at both the regional district and the city. And consider that this plan provides the foundation for the possibility of, of joint future service investments. But how those investments proceeds is ultimately up to the council and Regional District Board to, to make investments on an annual basis for future, for future service improvements. So I'm here, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions about B C Transit more generally. But Jacob is the expert on the plan and the planning work that's, that he's done over the last year and a half or so, since he's been, joined us. And I'm more than happy to turn over to Jacob to walk us through the plan.
Thanks, Seth. Appreciate, appreciate the introduction. Excited to be here to present an update to the transit future service plan for, for Port Alberni. So as Seth mentioned, my name is Jacob Burnley. I'm the transit planner here at B C Transit, overseeing a number of systems across Vancouver Island, Cowichan Valley, and I'm a Comox Valley, Port Alberni, and Tofino Ucluit as well. And today, just going to speak a bit to the development of this transit future service plan, which is this sort of five to seven year successional plan for Port Alberni Transit, providing a bit of background on the planning processes, the goals, the timelines, as we finalize and move forward. So as we move to the next slide here, just want to just make a quick recognition here that we are carrying out our work on the lands of the Saschat and Hoopacassit people. As both stakeholders and rights, rights holders, we value their local knowledge and ongoing contributions to the region. And they have been active participants in this process with us, providing some very valuable feedback on lived experience and transit use in their communities. So to the table of contents here, this is the full breakdown of my presentation, but my presentation today will be a bit expedited, focusing primarily on the engagement that we conducted, background on our top expansion priorities that we've identified, as well as a short look at some custom transit service information and infrastructure priorities. So this is going to sort of set the scene for what the plan for the next five to seven years is going to provide for Port Alberni, and guiding that investment in a strategic and meaningful way. To transit vision now, just looking back over the last decade and a half, service levels for Port Alberni have remained relatively stable. And much of the current system is, is born out of the 2012 service review. So it has been a while since Port Alberni has had a sort of fulsome review of their service. The current service operates on a pulse schedule system where all of the routes leave and arrive back from a central exchange point at the same time. In this case, it's the Redford Exchange. And this 2012 plan also supported the expansion of the Route Four, which is currently in service, offering evening and Sunday service for the community. So really, in looking at the service that we currently have in the community, this report now aims to provide sort of interim guidance and opportunities to make sure that transit's work is rooted in alignment with local planning and development strategies, making sure that it's reflective and responsive to community need, and is grounded both in public feedback and in the data that we see on a regular basis. So if I speak to transit today, there is sort of, I'll speak to the system level, and then I'll get more into the detail on a route level of how the system is doing. But currently, we have three, three sort of A M P M routes, so normal, normal working hour routes. And we have that one consolidated route that I mentioned before for those select off-peak periods. We do have a relatively small number of buses in operation in Port Alberni. And I will mention that B C Transit via our fleet department is, is also starting to look more intently at how we can better right-size vehicles to, to local systems to align with demand. So one thing we often hear is we see buses that are, you know, larger than we need, or there's buses that are smaller than we need. And we're trying to work to make sure that we're targeting our, our fleet procurement to the different needs, unique needs of the communities. Because B C Transit, as an organization, operates in smaller communities, in places like Port Hardy, places like Campbell River, places like Port Alberni, and also serving communities such as Kelowna and Victoria. So making sure that we're tailoring the assets that we have more appropriately. The current service offers just over twelve thousand annual service hours, and I'll note later in my slides. But there are some gaps in the service levels between our fixed route conventional service and the custom hand-dart service. And that's one challenge that we're looking to solve in the future. So if we go now to looking at the routes themselves on the next slide here, you can see that we have the Route One, which provides service to a number of community, a number of neighborhoods to the, to sort of the south end, the hospital as well, and also service to the harbor key. The Route Two provides service to the high school, various rec facilities, North Island College, the Uptown Core, and out to Walmart and the Pacific Rim Center. Route Three, which was a, which is a service that runs to the north, River Road. And we spoke at length with representatives from the Saschat First Nation about the, the importance and value of that service in connecting to, to their community and for their community members. And then, of course, we have the Route Four there. And you can kind of see that the Route Four is sort of a combination of all of the three routes, providing that off-peak service. If we go to the next slide here, transit need, speak a bit to the demographics. So we want to be looking at where people are residing, where are those key corridors. Since we did our last sort of wholesome plan for Port Alberni, which was over a decade ago now, the population of the community has steadily grown, grown in the demographic, demographics, like many other mid-sized communities has, has also changed. So I just will men, will make a mention that there are a number of areas in the community that are sort of lower density with dispersed populations. It does make providing efficient transit a, a, a challenge. But really, in looking at the census data that we have available to us, and looking at some of the, some of the demographic data as well, and in conversation with city staff, who, who we've met with on multiple occasions, there, there do appear to be a number of defined key corridors that have seen growth, that are going to continue to see growth over the next decade or so, and are, 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 you know, being supported by future, future improvements around density and community, key community nodes. So I'm thinking about places such as Argyle Street, Redford Street, Tenth Avenue, the Uptown Core as well. And just, we want to be making sure that the transit growth in Port Alberni is supporting the trends for population growth, supporting riders with solutions that are not just sustainable and affordable, but also efficient and competitive from a travel option. And then looking at really targeting our investments through this plan to support both coverage services to the outlined communities, but also to ensure that we're adequately serving those key corridors. So if we go to the next slide, this is kind of a continuation on what I just mentioned. But as you can see here, we have some population density and some low-income residential mapping as well. And we've looked at areas with higher concentrations of seniors and families. And we can, we can see that the service that we currently have actually does provide quite good coverage to these areas. And like I mentioned before, working with the city to ensure that our transit planning priorities offer alignment with the city's ongoing work, whether it's the transportation master plan or otherwise, really ensuring that we're responding to that community growth. So if we go to the next slide here, system performance, this is just sort of a snapshot at a system level of how the system is doing. So post-pandemic and in line with a number of other systems across the province, Port Alberni has seen gradual year-to-year ridership returns since 2021. We haven't yet reached that a hundred percent ridership recovery, but we are continuing to note that steady return of, of users. Port Alberni is experiencing ridership at five to 10% below the provincial average. But if we actually look at Port Alberni versus other peer systems, the local transit system from the number of hours that are utilized in a year is actually 25% smaller than a lot of the comparative, the comparative systems in, in other parts of the province. So sort of in terms of like bang for your buck and ridership proportional to the hours, the system is actually performing quite strongly and, and would definitely be a candidate for, for, for future improvement and growth. I'll just mention that the service hours for Port Alberni as well, on that second graphic you can see, shows that this, and this is something that was common for, for a lot of systems across B C, wasn't the case across the entire country, but that the service hours have remained stable year over a year. So unlike some other communities outside of British Columbia, where we saw ridership, we saw the number, the level of service being cut in response to the pandemic and in response to, to lower ridership, service in Port Alberni actually has remained relatively stable over the last five to six years. So if we go to the next slide here, now looking specifically dialing in from a system to a route-specific level, the Route Two is, is our, our clear higher ride, higher, highest ridership route in the system, obviously providing those key connections from some core commercial areas, access to school and education, rec facilities, shopping, services, et cetera. This route does see approximately twenty-two boardings per in-service hour, which is quite good. And while the three and the four, the Route Three and the four there, you can see are, are lower performers. They do serve lower-density areas and sort of provide more of a broader coverage-style service. So it's not unexpected that those would perform lower in relative to the Route Two. And then obviously, the Route Four, like I said, is off-peak. So it's, it's not those traditional peak commuter times. When we're talking When we're talking about ridership and route performance as well, one thing that I'm really passionate about as, as a planner and in working more closely with our scheduling teams and our data analysis teams is the technology that we have on board. So as of last year, we are now starting to get more reliable data from our buses directly at both a route level, but also at a trip level and even at a stop level. So we can now start to see in more, 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 more intently and in real time, where that, where the ridership is, what the trends are. And this is data that we have access to, that we can use to better inform planning priorities going forward. So this is something that I'm really excited about. This will help us to better assess that performance and also better assess the viability of any changes that we do want to make. So if we go to the next slide here, engagement. So now taking all the data that we're looking at and formalizing an engagement plan. And I'm sure that many of you around the table today are familiar with this process. This is something that took place over the last year and a half roughly. There were a number of steps in the transit future service planning process, but we had a robust public engagement campaign. There was a general survey that was circulated with targeted questions around usage perceptions of the service, prospective areas for improvement and expansion. We did also host a dedicated survey for our transit operators. This is really valuable to us because it provides us with more on-the-ground, everyday lived experience information. Not every person responding to the surveys member of the public is using the service on, on a daily basis. We saw a variety in terms of frequency of use, but our operators are there on the ground, day in, day out, providing the service and understanding and seeing the intricacies of where things are going right and also where things are going wrong. So that's really important to us. We supported an open house and workshop sessions with key community stakeholders. And in partnership with our, our partners at the ACRD, we also conducted some engagement with local First Nation community partners. And I will say that that was a really interesting process for us. Really a lot of valuable feedback that they came prepared to, to provide and help to inform the plan. So like I said, who, who do we hear from? There was 240 responses. I will mention that about 30% of the respondents were transit riders. So we did have to do an additional survey export to really get a better sense of the transit, transit user-focused data. And we also saw a large, a large split in where people were responding from too. So we were able to export the, the survey in a number of different ways and to see where the trends and patterns for the questions that we were asking were falling. And I will mention that of the existing transit users, the majority were, were from the city with approximately 40%, 46% of respondents noting transit use multiple times a week. So that's great to see that we are, we are getting feedback from those that have a very sort of a longstanding and detailed lived experience onboard. As previously mentioned, there was, there was a survey for the operators and, and there were some interesting notable parallels between the operator survey and the, and the rider survey, particularly on priorities for expansion, where the areas of higher ridership were and where we need to target investment. So that helps us to provide a clear sort of guide to where we want to be going in the future. So if we go to what we heard, so current service, we'll mention that a majority of the riders did support the, the question around if they felt that the service was reliable. This is largely based around that pulse system where the routes are departing at the same time and arriving at the same time. So if you do need to connect between two routes, it's actually quite efficient to do so in Port Alberni. There were, those connections were largely seamless. There was a strong satisfaction with the existing service and service reliability also scored quite positively. We did note that there was a gap in perceptions around safety onboard. So the majority of users of existing transit users felt that they were safe while using transit and traveling to and from transit. But in the survey responses and via supplemental feedback, non-riders and particularly parents of youth expressed some safety concerns. One thing I will mention is that we do have a corporate security team here at BC Transit that work closely with our local partners on, on any incidents that come up, anything safety-related. We have an infrastructure team that also takes safety into consideration when they're developing their projects as well. So this is something that I know that a lot of other systems in BC Transit are also interested in, 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 in working on. And, and there's, there's some interest on the backend at our organization to support that. And then when we speak to future service, just briefly, I'll mention that really the core piece was around frequency and span of service. So the week, the evenings and weekend service, definitely a desire for, for, for more service in those, in those periods. And then there was also a really interesting sort of consensus that was met, both from the operators, from the operators, the non-users and the existing users around potentially establishing future interregional service between Port Alberni and, and the Regional District of Nynimmo, something that was strongly supported. And I'll speak a bit more to that further in the presentation. I'll just briefly mention Sprout Lake. This has been something that has been sort of on the radar for the local system for a number of years now. We did canvas our users and operators on this question about the feasibility of a service to Sprout Lake for recreational purposes. I will mention that this expansion proposal we are recommending as being left out, we're recommending we leave this out of the current iteration of this plan. There was a large split in the feedback from users and non-users and also from residents of the Sprout Lake electoral area versus the city around, around sort of the cost-share discussions of this service. There was strong opposition from Sprout Lake residents as well around what the cost and feasibility of this would be and, and sort of what the goal of the service would be, if it would be to be connecting community or providing recreational, recreational access. So it is something that we are not going to be outlining as a short-term priority in this plan. However, it's something that I would still like to keep on the radar because it's something that I think that as, as I see with other systems in, across the province, and Seth can attest to this as well, there are, are unique funding models that are being prepared and designed and different agreements that are being put forth, whether it's for recreational service, whether it's for service to indigenous communities. So it is something that we have flexibility on working on further in the future. But at this time, it's not something that we'd be recommending as a short-term, a short-term goal. Is, so the next slide here, just, this is very high level and I'm going to kind of go one by one on these. But these are just providing a breakdown of our recommendations and proposals. I will mention that due to this pulse scheduling system that I mentioned at length before, most of these items will require additional review from our scheduling department to ensure that they can be facilitated with the fleet assignments and the operator and driver shifts that we currently have. I will also mention the caveat here that I've noted that there are some expansion service hours. And these are, these are hours that help our finance team determine annual costs for expansions. These are subject to minor changes and tweaks based on scheduling capacity as well. So if we go to, if we go to the next slide, one more further down, improving evening service. So if we go to the next slide, there we go. The first proposal that we have, and this is our, sort of our short-term year-one concept, would be for additional evening service on the Route Four. We have noted positive ridership from the data that we see, but also strong support in the public engagement for improving evening service on both weekdays and weekends. The current span of service has been noted as being somewhat inefficient, particularly for service workers. And we are recommending that we extend that service on an hourly basis, roughly on an hourly basis to 11:00 PM for, for those, for those dates. And like I mentioned there, service hours are subject to change, but we've done some costing from, from an hour perspective that we can always take to our finance team if this is something that we'd like to proceed with as an expansion proposal. The next item here is transit service on Route Two. So like I mentioned, this is the higher, highest ridership route in the, in the system. And this, while the ridership appear, or the service appears sufficient currently for what the ridership is, as Port Alberni grows over the next few years, I suspect that this will be, given the nature of the route and its connection to services, amenities and schools and recreation facilities, I suspect that this will, this service will continue to grow with ridership and demand. And we're recommending just sort of minor increases to adding potential additional trips to, to this service. The next slide here speaks to transit service to the Seychelles First Nation. This is something that we spoke with, with the community at length on and representatives from the First Nation provided sort of a strong, a strong background of support for, for this, for this concept. We've developed two, two routing options that can provide us with a base to then go forth with a feasibility study if this is something of interest. We've done some budgeting around service hours, like I said, but really this, this is just meant to sort of provide a kickstart to, is this something that we want to explore as a potential expansion item? If it is, we would be proceeding with a service, service study, a short service study, providing costing and inputting that into a, into an expansion, into expansion letter. The next item I have here is interregional service to, to the RDN. So this is something that saw really strong support from existing ridership, 93% of support from transit users, 65% of support amongst all respondents, which was one, one, one item that saw sort of clear consensus across the board for the most part. There is an interest in year-round service with, with consideration to the access to those services, amenities, whether it's recreational health or employment opportunities that are not available in Port Alberni. Regional expansion would need to provide or would need to involve participation with the ACRD. And it would require additional discussion to modify the governance and funding structure of the system. But this is something that was really noted very strongly for support. And the next step in this pursuit would be for BC Transit to produce, similar to the Seychelles First Nation expansion, a feasibility report to provide a bit of an analysis of what the service options could be from a planning, scheduling and operational costing perspective. It is a significant number of hours, but it is something that, while it does require more groundwork, is something that was strongly supported sort of via all factions that participated in the program, whether it was our First Nations partners, whether it was riders, non-riders or operators. And then lastly, I'll just speak to on-time performance. This is something that's just minor, I won't speak to it too in-depth, but this is just a sort of a, something I like to include around as we start to see continuing population growth, as we start to see more traffic on key corridors. It's always good in the back of our minds to be thinking about on-time performance. So year over year, traffic and capital projects and impacts to roads do impact the schedules. And so a posted schedule that was prepared five years ago might not be 100% accurate a number of years down the line. And it's important that we consider sort of cyclical, cyclical annual investments. This is something that can be added as a short-term priority, can be, can be left to a long-term priority, but it's something that we want to at least be considering on an annual basis for discussion with the local partners to ensure that we maintain service reliability and schedule consistency. The next slide here speaks to custom service priorities, very early stages. But in consultation with staff, we've identified some of the goals for custom hand-dart service to support the historical objective of aligning our custom hand-dart service with our fixed route conventional. We are also noting peak travel periods and potential increased capacity there and really a desire for expansion of the hand-dart service to, to be including pickup and drop-off bookings with the, with local First Nations. These expansion priorities are currently under review. So I've noted there that the resources are not yet determined, but they are being taken into consideration and being reviewed by our, our manager of custom transit currently with costing and hours to be confirmed in our annual expansion cycle. And then just short here in infrastructure priorities, I'll just speak to this very quickly. Not just looking at the bus on the route, but also thinking about the supportive infrastructure to improve the transit experience. I will mention that Port Alberni is currently active with BC Transit's Shelter Program to support amenity improvements. And recently we met with city staff, it was last week, to discuss improvements to bus stop signage as well at a number of key stops around the community. So things, things of that nature are obviously key. And we want to be ensuring that we're keeping up the, 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 the functional, the infrastructure piece, the, the branding and awareness with the on, on-the-ground infrastructure. And then lastly, just speaking to operations and maintenance. So a larger maintenance facility will be needed in the coming years for Port Alberni to support transit system growth. And I'm sure Seth could speak more to that in those ongoing conversations. But a lot of these priorities would require additional vehicles. And that's just another consideration that we need to be taking, taking into account. Lastly, I'll just note the process moving forward from a funding perspective. So the plan before you today does not require an immediate cost share or financial commitment for approval. The service hours noted in the report are meant to be high-level at this point in time. They can also be scaled up or down and we can work with, with, with staff to, to get a better sense of what that could translate to in terms of an actual schedule. Once the plan is adopted, the priorities from this plan would be incorporated into our annual transit improvement process cycle where we would, we would seek resolution and assigned MOU for year-to-year expansion items based on the items from this plan. And we really are looking at creating, creating sort of a, an incremental improvement cycle here for the system. For you as, as a committee and your council, obviously for the community, this is about creating a plan that is scalable and implementable, that contributes to alignment with community planning priorities and reflects the, the, the needs of the riders, but also is grounded in the data as well. And, and that's really all I have today. So if you just go to the next steps there, just seeking, inviting your approval for this plan, seeking any feedback you might have and would be seeking recommendation onto your council for final approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, myself and Seth are available. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Council. Council Hackett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a comment and a question. First of all, really appreciate you having the extended hours, evening hours and weekend hours as your number one priority. During the last few years, I've heard several times from service providers and members of our community. For example, if somebody is working at Starbucks, they get off work, they don't, can't get home, they have to get a taxi. It's okay in the summer because you might be able to walk home, but we have a lot of very dark rainy evenings where that may not be possible or you may not feel comfortable doing that. So I really appreciate that. Now my question is, I see that we're not back to our pre-COVID levels in ridership. Is that just Port Alberni or is that a trend still throughout the province? And can you provide any explanation as why we haven't reached those pre-pandemic levels yet?
Yeah, I can speak a bit to sort of peer communities if that's, if that's kind of your question. So there are a number of communities that are sort of hovering slightly below that pre-pandemic level. A large portion of that in, in a number of communities is, is sort of work from home, changing travel patterns. But in terms of, in terms of sort of strategies to, 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 to reach that 100% level again, really there, from what we heard from riders and non-riders alike is creating service that is, that is a bit more, maybe more efficient and, and direct. So competitive service from a time and cost perspective is, is of key interest to those non-riders. A number of, a number of people who responded to the survey in the, in the supplemental feedback did note that, that that was one of their key, key concerns was sort of comparative travel times between various modes and the fact that our routes in, in a certain sense are offering, both trying to offer both coverage and, and, and corridor ser, service, I guess. But in terms of corporate strategies, I would have to, I would have to defer to Seth on that front. Maybe Seth, you could speak to that.
Yeah, I think that we have seen, we see some other small communities that have struggled to grow ridership. And in those communities, we've really focused on how do we improve the service we have on the roads? We have looked at some options and I think that perhaps the regional district is actually pursuing this currently. When you send out your tax notice to your residents, including a little one-page slip about, about your transit service, that's an option. So there are some, some light options that we could pursue or look at to promote the transit service to your residents to grow ridership. But ultimately the real bang for buck in terms of growing your ridership in your community really comes down to service levels and what, what we hear and what we see in, in transit planning literature is that frequency and service is king and that's what attracts riders to, to the system. As for why Port Alberni has seen a more, a slower trajectory, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but I think Jacob sort of hit the nail on the head that people are commuting to work more often and, and not having to visit the office quite as frequently. So that might be, be part of the story certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I really appreciate taking the time with us tonight. I had planned on taking transit this morning, two weeks ago, but I got picked up at the bus stop this morning. So I couldn't enjoy the, the $2 transit ride across town. So I just wanted to say the, the potential path to Seychelles Market has been something that's been talked about for decades here. We really love to see the feasibility study on that. I think there's some successes there. Also love to see the feasibility on going to the Nynimmo Regional District area, Parksville, Qualcomm as well. I just wanted to ask about operations though, and just the, the one point is looking for a larger facility. Are you far along in that process or are we just starting? I guess the other question is, do you, you own the building that you operate out of now? And how much? And how much bigger? And would the city have input on, or at least an idea, and talk to you about where the potential places would be for a larger facility?
Certainly, I'll take this one. We are currently actually not in ownership of the facility in Port Alberni. Our operating company under contract through BC Transit, which is now Keolis, formerly Pacific Western Transit. They actually lease the facility. That facility is almost maxed out. It could perhaps accommodate one additional light-duty bus. But that limits our expansion capacity in the foreseeable future. We haven't quite yet investigated any options to expand the garage, but I have had several conversations with my colleague in our infrastructure project development team and identified that it would be nice to put a study to look at what our operational needs for a new facility are on the docket. And so we've put that on in the docket for perhaps to start working on it next year. And that would be a bit of an engineering study for Port Alberni to look at what do we need to accommodate? And it would look at what's the 25 to 30-year growth cycle for transit? What are we envisioning for how many buses we need to accommodate? And then being able to look at, do we build, do we lease, do we continue to work through our operating company to be able to facilitate an adequate operating maintenance space?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Rade, I do. And if it comes around next year and the plan is to either build or move the facility in general, I would just ask that you stay in touch with city staff. We might have some property or some ideas for you as well to house the transit in our community. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other comments from Council? Counselor Sola.
Thank you for your presentation, and I'm just kind of curious to know regarding the shelters for accessibility. I actually seen a gentleman near one of the older shelters, and he was in a wheelchair and he couldn't get in and sit down because there's no accessibility there. Are you looking at doing wheelchair accessibility and maybe the people who have sight problems too, that there might be some braille or something like that that would help them with the signs and stuff? I'm just maybe going beyond what you're saying. And also, I just also want to say, it's interesting, I'll wait for that answer, actually. I was going to go ahead with something else, but I'll wait for an answer from you for the first question.
No worries. First question I'll speak to is right around the accessibility. So that's something that BC Transit has developed guidelines on around sort of standards and minimum standards for what is classified as an accessible shelter. That is something that we intend to work collaboratively on with local partners. I know in a number of communities, there's also been questions around sort of defining accessible shelters and providing that information public-facing. So if you're a new user or prospective user, how to determine what shelters are accessible, what shelters are non-accessible? If you were to go to our website and look for that information, oftentimes it actually says to call your local transit office, which is just another barrier to entry for potential people using the system. So that is something as well that our organization is looking at, not only defining standards, but also in sort of what the process would be in terms of keeping that record, keeping that database. Because we have, in a number of systems, we have, you know, 200, 300, 400-plus bus stops that might meet those guidelines, but that aren't reported. So yeah, it's definitely an interesting challenge, and it kind of bridges the, it bridges planning work with our infrastructure team. But I'm aware that on their end, they are looking at that as well. And there are sort of, you know, minimum widths for sidewalks, consideration to ramp deployment as well, curb cuts as well we look at. And that is something that our transit shelter program and infrastructure folks are looking at when they're evaluating applications for that program.
Super. And when you did your survey and you were talking to the people, the people that are living with disabilities, did you actually have contact with people living with disabilities and having issues? And what they would like to see in that? I just want to make sure we have a diversified survey that was done.
Yeah, that's a great question. So there were a number of comments in the feedback that we received around accessibility challenges and concerns. They didn't, the folks that responded didn't provide like a specific organization that they may have been part of, but they had identified themselves as transit users with accessibility needs. So that is something we've taken into consideration. And like I mentioned before, the accessibility guidelines that we have, they were developed through our infrastructure team based on consultation with accessibility groups, both here where I'm based in Victoria, but in consultation with other accessibility groups around the province for what those standards should be and cross-referencing with what our fleet requirements are and how our buses interact with a stop. So I'm hoping that can answer your question in part. In terms of formal public engagement with specific groups, that would have taken place prior to my arrival. Seth, maybe you would have information on if any of that engagement took place?
Yeah, thanks, Jacob. Sorry about my internet cutting out. It's very unusual. I'm not sure what happened. But I will say that we did carry out engagement with a number of community groups and organizations. I don't think we connected explicitly with any groups representing disabled folks, but I would say that we spent several days riding the buses and just talking to people that were using the transit system and talking about accessibility challenges and functional access challenges. And certainly had some really helpful conversations, and that information was related notes from Victor to Jacob. And so I feel like those sentiments were carried on and are represented in the work that we have today. Additionally, we've been working closely with Clinton Wright, your manager at the city, to improve accessibility and sort of your connectivity for pedestrians across the city. And we're both excited about that work and excited about the city's capacity to undertake that work and support accessibility between transit and to get around the city.
All right, super. And the other thing is, it was interesting on your census report, the 4.5%, although it's only till from 2016 to 2021. Sure, looking forward to our new census report. It should come out starting on May 2026 every five years. So I'm looking forward to seeing how our community has increased. And from what I hear from the economic, our economic manager, that we get a new family moving in daily. So I'm really curious to see where that's going to go at, the projection for it. And also, I thought that was quite interesting that the survey, 50% was Beaver Creekers. And I grew up Beaver Creeker years when I was a teenager, and I sure wished you guys were out there before, you know? Because you couldn't go anywhere. And so I thought that was interesting where your survey went. So thank you very much. I appreciate your report.
Thanks for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Just going to go to our CAO.
Thanks. Just through to Seth, we do have a new accessibility committee. It's in conjunction with ACRD, and we're looking at initiatives to focus on. And one would be really good on the bus shelters, locations, etc. to get their opinion on it. So you could reach out to Sarah Darling, our corporate officer, to arrange maybe a chat with them.
Thank you. Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure whom I should direct this question to, but through the mayor. I've anecdotally heard reports on an inability to make regular long-term bookings through the handy-dart system, which is causing difficulties for individuals that use the system on a weekly basis sort of thing, where there was a, used to be an ability to book. For example, if you always need a ride every Monday to go to school, there was an ability to book that for up to a year in advance, and that seems to have fallen away now, possibly because of service levels. I'm just wondering, what monitoring do you do particularly of the handy-dart system? And what KPIs would be triggering an increase in providing that service or a review of the level of service?
Certainly, we actually added additional handy-dart service earlier this year. There was an expansion through the Regional District Board to really improve the availability during peak times of the day. And so historically, certainly before this expansion was implemented, we did have, we did see ridership exceeding the operating company's ability to meet that demand and to service every ride. What you're speaking to is referred to as subscription trips in the transit world. And the other type of trip is a reservation trip. A reservation trip is when someone calls and says, this Tuesday, I need a ride from here to here. But a subscription trip is when you say, I want to ride every Tuesday to be able to get to a regular event. And so transit needs to balance the need for subscription trips with reservation trips. Reservation trips are also, are quite often very important things, like doctor's appointments that or specialist appointments. And so we have thresholds where we want to maintain subscription trips below a certain threshold. That threshold is ideally around 60%. I haven't looked at the custom ridership data for Port Alberni lately, but I can certainly look at that and follow up with my colleague in operations who manages that directly and keeps a close eye on that and see where we're at with subscription trips. I would suspect that that is the origin of the issue you've identified. I would say generally right now, since the expansion, which was rolled out in February, we've had opportunity to meet more service and to fulfill the service that's been requested. But there may have been a gap with regular subscription trips every single week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sola.
I would like just to touch back on to the handy-dart. Is it cost-effective in the fact that going out to Sprout Lake Beaver Creek or even in the city or any other area of the regional district? Because I am told it's quite expensive to pick up one person, and I'd be kind of curious to know. Someone told me how much it was, and I don't have those figures, but I thought, whoa. And I know from being in business that when the handy-dart wasn't available, taxis were called to take them from A to B. And I'm just wondering how effective that would be instead of just having a bus route in the long run? Would it be less dollars going out or carrying on with handy-dart? And I know handy-dart has special equipment and stuff like that on top of that, maybe more so than a bus would have. So just kind of curious.
Yes, certainly. I would say, first off, I want to acknowledge that the cost of handy-dart is not on the low end. It is certainly a shocker when you look at the individual cost per trip for a lot of folks. But it's providing a fairly fundamental social service that is really valued. I would say that the drivers provide a much higher service level that is critically needed for a lot of our customers. And that service is going door-to-door and providing that custom service. So if a client might have a particular mobility need or has a cognitive impairment, and they might forget where they're going, the driver is trained and able to be able to support those individual disabilities and abilities. Whereas when we look at taxi, there's not always that same flexibility. And certainly, we get, sometimes there's necessity, as you highlight, to dispatch a taxi. Certainly, when you have a bus or two buses driving around Port Alberni, and there's one trip out in the far reaches of Beaver Creek, that might be a situation where the operating company would dispatch a taxi to be able to fulfill that ride, especially if that person doesn't have much flexibility and what time they need to get somewhere. But then the operating company also has to make a discretionary decision. Is this person suitable for deploying a taxi? And some people obviously would be totally fine in a taxi, and some people wouldn't. So that, these are the day-to-day decisions that our operating company makes. Our operating company also has dispatch software, but we don't have access to that dispatch software. So your question about KPI and monitoring that and seeing what the cost on an individual cost per ride, especially for those further out rural rides, is very difficult to answer right now. We don't have the metrics broken down like that, and we're not able to disaggregate our costs accordingly. But we're excited about bringing online a dispatch software solution for the entire province. We're currently just in the procurement process of selecting a vendor. And in the next few months, hope to be online across the province with implementation of this dispatch technology. And consider that it'll provide us huge value in seeing what the service delivery metrics are, what these KPIs are by area, by time of day, by day of week, and really optimize the service so that we can deliver better service to our customers and users across communities we serve.
Well, I look forward to seeing your new technology in action. And second is, I am not saying your staffing for the handy-dart is not valuable, because they are. And I've seen them firsthand, how they come in to a business, and they actually help whoever they're transporting and taking from A to B. So what my comment mainly is, is the cost. So, and I find handy-dart is valuable, but is there a better way of delivery? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I just have a couple of questions before we finish up. Firstly, I'm very curious if there was a trend in what the people of Beaver Creek had to say in the survey. It seems almost like there was an organized effort to get that many residents to participate. So I'm just curious. I know that you noted that, you noted the comments of the vast majority of riders. And I'm assuming those are not Beaver Creek people, since there is just one stop in Beaver Creek, which is a separate issue. But I'm wondering if there was a theme in the comments that they had.
Yeah, so the majority of the transit users, as I mentioned, were from the city proper. The majority of feedback that we received from Beaver Creek was largely in opposition to service expansion in their electoral area. There was not, the majority of the respondents, part of the reason we exported the survey was the majority of the respondents that had identified Beaver Creek, they had only answered certain questions around certain expansions and certain feedbacks. So there were questions such as, you know, such as the Route 2 expansion that wasn't fully responded to amongst that swath of riders or that swath of users from the survey. What I will mention, though, is that overall, interregional service, interregional service connection was something that was still supported at a high level, even from those in opposition to other service. So just something interesting. But yeah, the majority of the feedback that we received was unfortunately in opposition to service.
Thank you. Appreciate knowing that. And actually, a really interesting point that there was still support for the interregional service is that's something that we've talked about at the Regional District Table quite a bit. And with reasonably consistent support around that table as well. So nice to know that even a group of residents who aren't necessarily supporters of the everyday transit service are still supporters of that expansion being looked at. Last comment I just wanted to make, we have had quite a bit of expansion at Rainbow Gardens over the last few years, as I'm sure you're aware of. Rainbow Gardens, I think, is on Route 3, the Westport Route. And currently, it looks like it goes Downriver Road, turns up Falls and misses Rainbow Gardens, although there could be a stop on the Falls side. But still a reasonable distance for people who are elderly in that facility to have to walk to get to a bus stop. Wondering if there's been any consideration yet to add, to change that route slightly to go up Russell Street and be able to stop right in front of Rainbow Gardens? If that's been something that's been considered, and if not, if we could initiate that process?
Yeah, thanks for the question. That was not something that was actually brought up in the public engagement, but it is something I'm happy to look at. It doesn't look like it would be a huge deviation in the Route 3 and wouldn't have a large service hour impact. So it's something that, certainly to start, we can look at analyzing that to see what that would eventually cost and how that would interact also with the scheduling, like I mentioned, where routes are arriving at the same time. I would have to look at the on-time performance of the Route 3 to see if there is some flexibility there, but that's something we could definitely explore for sure.
Thank you very much. I think that would be really appreciated. That is becoming a higher and higher density neighborhood and specifically for That is becoming a higher and higher density neighborhood and specifically for elderly people. And there is another development application that is in front of council right now. And I would just say that regardless of whether that passes or fails, the addition of or the change of that route, I think, would be highly valuable. If it's a service time issue, I think we could possibly cut the the stop that is outside of city limits right now. I would rather prioritize having a stop at Rainbow Gardens than having a stop in Beaver Creek where the residents don't actually contribute to the cost of the service. So I think it would be extremely valuable to be able to have a stop right in front of Rainbow Gardens if it's feasible. So if you and our staff can take that away and work on that, would be appreciated. With that, I don't see any other questions. Great, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to one additional comment. I will mention that the Falls at River Road stop across across the river from the Sichot First Nation is one of our highest ridership stops on the Route Three. And there was also expressed interest there. So that 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 actual that area as a whole is is one that we are exploring. So it's actually it's quite timely that that you bring that up. So I will definitely take a look at that. I think Seth had another comment there.
Seth, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to go back to the handy dart piece and just mention additionally that the provincial government, as part of the transit, BC Transit model, funds 46.69% of conventional fixed route transit. So they fund just under half of your costs and then you pay 53.31%. And but that's driven down by the by the fair revenue that you receive. So all the revenue is applied 100% directly to your costs. But on the custom handy dart side, that service is funded 66.69% by the province. So it's the CRD who who has the annual operating agreement for the custom transit function. And they pay 33.31%. So the province recognized in creating BC Transit and creating the separate funding formula for custom transit that that because the higher costs of operating the service, it made sense for the province to pay a bigger share and be able to enable people across the province to live fulfilling lives despite the higher costs. So I just wanted to speak to that that cost conversation.
Thanks, that's super helpful. And I think that we contribute to custom transit, the handy dart service through the regional district as well. Yeah, and all of this is really helpful. I I think that if that stop at Falls and River Road is an important stop for Sichot, then maybe it is a slightly larger shift to that route to be able to service both the Sichot area as well as Rainbow Gardens. But seems like it's doable, hopefully it is. I think those are both really important areas and areas where we will get a high ridership, which is really what we want ultimately. Councillor Solder.
And just one more thing, I'm going to be curious to see what your future plans are when we put in the roundabout. And it'll be a one lane access onto River Road. So looking forward to hearing about that in the future.
Thank you. Not seeing any other comments. Thank you both so much for coming today and for the detailed presentation and answering all of our questions. I think we'll look forward to welcoming you back again soon, I'm sure.
Thank you, our pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, and we will move on to our second delegation per day. We have Joe Martin from the Alberni Valley Bulldogs. Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I apologize just as much as I'd love to stay and listen to this fine presentation. I'd like to recuse myself for a conflict of interest as I am a volunteer for the Bulldogs, a long term volunteer. But I do receive a renumeration for my duties.
Thank you, councillor Mealy.
All right, nice to be here. See you later. Yeah, recognize some faces, it's nice to first time here, but thank you for having me. Stephanie Weber, who normally would probably do this as a way, I think, on vacation. I know some of this artwork after getting to know Gary Wong, the new owner, majority owner of the Bulldogs. I can walk through this presentation as best I can. I don't know, has anyone seen this prior? Okay. I take it, is it Sarah back there? Oh, Sarah, right here, okay, so you had it, great. The so the two signs that are up that you can see in that left picture, just like, you know, regular signs that can be made really anywhere, came from Keith Panel Systems, which Gary owns in Vancouver. And through partnership with the city staff, Rod Cranavell and others there, we helped install those. The new ones that are going in or wanting to go in are not even not like that at all. You can see where those arrows are coming from, ombre feature wall application. So ombre is the type of sign that's going to go in or asking to go in. You can see as we move along, I guess that's the the viewing where you would be able to see the sign on that blank wall there. We used to have a big banner. Dave, who used to work here, has now moved on, had a big banner up there. And then we moved on to this sign that's currently there. I think in the next slide is the so the one that's currently there is 16 feet and obviously looking to expand that. And then it's five feet in depth and then wrapping all under around it. So the three players chosen to be, that's okay, three players chosen to be on it. We'll work, you know, with right to left. Kayden Tremblay, whose mom works in this building. Kayden's going into his fifth year here. Can't say too much, but will have a very big leadership role with this hockey team. One of my first guys that I've been here, because I've been here six years now, Callum Tong in the middle. So Tongar played for for us a couple of years ago. Little background on Callum is that 19 year old rookie, played for the Bombers the year before, actually. And then 19 year old rookie and had to leave the team in October. I got a text at nine o'clock at night asking to meet and left the team to mental health issues. Issues is the wrong word, but had to leave the team to mental health. And then took care of himself, we stayed in touch, came back and played in the playoffs here in the finals against Penitentum when we lost. Played for us the next year, got a scholarship. And then within one year, so he's actually a 20 year old rookie, which is unheard of in junior hockey. And then recently just signed with the New York Rangers. So he's played one year at college, took his team further than they ever have been, which he did with the Bombers, which he partly did with the Bulldogs, and they did at University of Connecticut. Great story, great kid, and he's kind of the feature in the middle. Jonathan Wong played for us last year, Jonathan's Gary's son. But Jonathan has a scholarship as well and a commitment to Leninwood University, and he's gone, moved on. So Kayden would be a current player that's on it, the other two are alumni with great stories. But as we move along, the the sign won't look like that at all. So here's this, here's what it would look like. I don't think it's going to be that clear when when you see it in person. Just I sent Charles a few pieces of artwork. I don't know if we can just go over to that MEC one. So Gary's company in I didn't comb my hair today, I was working outside before I came with my kids. Had a hat on all day. I don't comb it anyways, but that's okay. This is really highlighting my last comments. So you can see if you like, I've lived in you know, and over here for six years, then, you know, Merritt before for eight years and a little bit of time in Vancouver. I think when you live over here, Merritt spends more time in Vancouver. But MEC is obviously a big company in the West. Some people would know whether those mountains are, I'm not sure which ones they are. But I think when you live in Vancouver and you're, I think those are the ones you see every day. So this, his company did MEC, which is downtown Vancouver, St. Mary's Hospital, I think they're working on or finished. Lululemon, they did. There's lots of other, like Brentwood Building in Vancouver. One that they're not allowed to put on their website is the San Francisco 49ers, if you follow football. They did their building as well. Are there, I think it's called Levi's Stadium. But it's it's, I'm not sure how many pieces of like of what is it, equipment or not? But each size is like a size of a toony that goes on the artwork. And so there's probably millions of them on that, and they're all engineered to reflect the sun. So there's a study that goes in on, obviously, on the on the sun and how it reflects off the building. And there's all these little dimples, just like on a golf ball, and it reflects to an image. And it's pretty amazing when you see that. I knew I Gary told me about it. And then my last time in Vancouver, I went by it and it's it really just stands out. So the when you look back at that other slide that we had, when you had those three players, it's not going to look like just like that, it's not going to be as obvious. It would be you got to really look at it to, I think, to picture who the players are really are. That's the, so you can see actually on that bottom one, that'd be more of what it looks like there. But it's, it would look a lot like that MEC going forward. That's it. So like with the last installation, Gary sent over his team. We had a lift there. I don't sure if that was through Skytech, I think we borrowed Skytech's lift or they, I'm pretty sure we borrowed theirs. He had a team come over and do the installation. They sent over all the paperwork on what would be required in the installation had Mr. Cranavell and whoever else approve it. Obviously, Willa was here at the time and looked at all the information and we're a go. They were here for a few days and got it up. I don't know how long this one would take. But these guys, the the two people that he sent over, the two managers of of his company that's been with him for 20 plus years and take some fishing and come over here and do this installation. So it's all on Gary or it's all on the hockey team to provide everything for all the rental equipment, for all the installation and all the paperwork that needs to be sent over to the city to approve it. For me, like, so I've been here, I've been here for six years and plan to be here a lot longer. It's a huge upgrade for our look, our brand. It's important to, things like this are important to me because like when you're you're in the recruiting world of trying to bring over good players and have good hockey teams and you know, there's some things that we, you know, we just, we just don't have that others have. And I'm not crying, you know, whatever. It's just we don't have, lots of teams have a gym inside their rink and have a, you know, bit more to their facility. And this is just something that we could add. You know, we don't have, currently, we don't have our own bus that has would have a lot of branding, teams have their own bus and put their logo on it, and just all that stuff kind of helps. And it's it's something that would highlight our building, kind of make them more, you know, even more proud of of it. They already really are. But it's, we hired a guy a couple of years ago named Carson that does a lot of great video work for us. And it's just another another thing that, you know, for me, another tool that I can have to help make sure that we're always, you know, staying as relative as we can in the junior hockey world. I'm really good with questions, it's better with questions than presenting, so I don't know if that's, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. I couldn't agree more with you, it looks fantastic. It would be a great addition to the multiplex and would love to see it come to fruition. I think it's a really exciting way to show support for the team when the team shows a lot of support for the community consistently. The players do a really fantastic job of of coming out, supporting community events, you know, everywhere I go, I see them. So it's it's really nice. They bring a just fantastic vibe to the community and hope they know that we appreciate them and the work that they do. So this is really exciting. To clarify, I understand you're not asking for money from the city for this, which is wonderful, always appreciated. Do you need, you talked about approvals with Willa. So are there additional approvals that you need with staff or coordinating? Or is this just really for information today?
I think it's just for information. The, I think, Mr. Cranavell's away on vacation, right? So I think whoever that's signing off on the engineering is the production to make the sign would take a little bit. It'd be nice to have it. You know, for us, we, the Bombers started August 22nd, and then the Bulldogs Hockey School is the 25th. And we, you know, kind of kick things off September 1st. So, you know, right around that time would be great. You know, just once that paperwork's approved, that that the that the city feels that, you know, the construction of the engineering and and the installation is is adequate, then they would start building it right away and get it sent over. And so I really just, you know, asking for that. But I can't ask for that without them seeing the paperwork. So if you want to, I guess what I'd be asking for is if they want to see the paperwork, that they want to see the what it would look like, the the installation, making sure that it meets the requirements.
Absolutely. So I mean, I think we can, I don't know if we even necessarily need a motion to direct you to work with them on it if there is an agreement that needs to come back to council. But if anyone wants to make a motion, it has to come to the next council meeting anyways. But for now, I'll go to councillor Solder for a comment.
Yeah, just a quick question, Madam Mayor, to maybe to staff about, I see that that you'll be providing qualified installers and cover all the project costs. But it says the city of Port Alberni will need to relocate two lights on the building. Is that going to be a difficulty or is maybe staff can let us know?
Yeah, through the chair, I have talked to Willa and Rob on this. And we would need a simple agreement, just going over who retains ownership, who maintains it, et cetera. And those lights have been discussed and would be make part of that agreement. So I believe if council is on board with this going up, then what we would do is work on an agreement and bring it back to council.
Great, councillor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to bring up another point they probably haven't thought of. I'm a mother of female hockey player who reached the Team Canada level. So when I see a hockey mural on a city owned building that promotes being inclusive to all genders, there is no female hockey players on this mural. And I realize that is specific to your hockey team. But if it's a city owned facility, I would like to see it being more inclusive. So just another point of view.
That's a good point.
Girls do play hockey.
For sure, yeah. Your your daughter played at Team Canada level? For Team Canada? How old is she?
I shouldn't tell you how old she is because then you'll know how old I am.
The, so she won an Olympic gold?
She was on the Junior Team Canada.
Okay, I grew up with Jana Hefford and Jana's a good friend of mine. Yeah, I used to own a hockey school and Jana would come work at it. And I understand, you know what you're saying, for sure. So my assistant coach, Ryan Rehill, his fiancee, Dani, I forget Dani's last name, her dad has works for Wood Gundy here at CVC, if anyone knows that guy. But anyways, the they're they're starting, they're moving the seals here this year. So it's like the highest level midget for women, which is awesome. Doesn't help put somebody on the sign, but I understand what you're saying. I think that's a, it's a great comment. But if we had a woman playing for the Bulldogs, maybe that would be something. I don't know, maybe that's for something that's next, that's a good, that's definitely a good point.
Yep, I think there's a lot more places that signs could go up within the multiplex where we could be cognizant of that. And I I'm sure there are lots of great female athletic stories we could highlight in the hockey world as well, locally from Port Alberni. So yeah, thanks for that, councillor Haggard. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. I mean, if somebody wants to, we could recommend to council that we approve in principle this concept and direct staff to bring back an agreement if necessary at the council level. Moved by councillor Solder, seconded by councillor Dame. Any comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, unopposed. Thank you, thanks so much for coming today.
Yeah, appreciate, thank you.
We will get councillor Mealy back. Yes. All right, we have no unfinished business, no staff reports, no correspondence. But don't worry, there's lots left. Onto new business, item number one, we have reserve fund establishment bylaw amendments. Welcome, Roslyn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the report presented to you this evening is to propose some new reserves to our reserve establishment bylaw. Currently, we do hold all of the city's reserves in our consolidated bylaw and in a schedule. Uh, currently, we do hold all of the city's reserves in our consolidated bylaw and in a schedule. Uh, it talks about intent and purpose. So in front of you today is just three reserves that we would like to uh propose that the committee recommend to council. So we have in establishment of asset management, lease revenue reserves. So fifty percent of our lease revenue um would be put into this reserve. Uh, we wanted to keep that segregated from the current asset management reserve simply because it's for the purpose and intent of these leased buildings. Uh, so we want to make sure that any of the funds put in there go towards those buildings that are contributing. The second reserve is the local transit fund reserve. So we do have a local transit account that's held with B C Transit currently. Um, that would just bring the funds into the city, uh just brings more transparency. Uh, so council understands that they have those funds available for use. Uh, the funds that are held are just for local transit improvements, uh so for bus stops, shelters and such. Uh, the third is actually an amendment to purpose for the McLean's Mill Reserve. Uh, we do collect heritage fees. Uh, we've been doing that since twenty twenty under um our contract with the Burnie Valley Chamber of Commerce. So uh, we do have a fair-sized pot. I think it's just, just over forty-three thousand right now. Um, so we do recommend um that we do segregate those funds within a reserve. Um, and so it would just be simply changing the purpose to say um, to include uh the funds uh that are for a specific purpose for historic uh costs. So currently the reserve, you can choose between historic and nonhistoric infrastructure projects. Uh, we would simply create uh wording in there that would speak to the heritage funds specifically for historic purposes. Uh, when we do present reserve balances, uh we will ensure that we uh list the differences between um what's currently in the reserve for historic and nonhistoric and for the heritage fees. And I think that that's about it. I mean, if there's uh, I mean, the options are to uh move this forward and present it in front of council if endorsed today. Uh, if you wish to make any alternatives uh to the um consolidated reserves. Um, or if you have any other questions or comments about the proposed ones, I'm happy to answer them today.
Great. Thank you very much for the report. Are there questions from council? Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the committee, the whole recommend council provide introduction in three readings to amend the reserve fund establishment bylaw, number five zero eight six twenty twenty-three for the purpose of adding the following reserves. Establishment of asset management, lease revenue reserve. Establishment of transit, local transit fund reserve and amendment to purpose, McLean Mill Reserve.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Mealy. Is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Solder. Any comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Carry, none opposed. Thank you very much. And on to item number two, Argyle First to Third redevelopment project.
Good evening. Thank you through the chair, uh to mayor and council. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss two capital projects that we're seeking early approval in the financial plan uh for twenty twenty-six and the reason for that is just for timing, for construction tendering and to get contractor availability while we can early in the season. Um, so the first is the Argyle First to Third Development. Basically, uh, excuse me, uh, back to requesting early financial approval. The, the background behind this uh project is that uh this was identified as a key strategic priority area by council, I believe as far back as twenty nineteen uh in the Argyle corridor between First and Third Avenue. Um, the project scope touches on a number of key council strategic priorities. Um, I'll run through them here briefly. Essentially, uh, one of the big ones is the combined sewer system separation, uh where we'll be installing a new storm trunk main and separating the sanitary and storm trunk, uh storm sewer systems. Um, we'll also be adding in a number of pedestrian safety um factors, including intersection bump outs, pedestrian activated signals, those types of things at all the intersections. Um, I did have a figure for the project layout. I'm not sure if the computer systems are working right now. Um, just as I talk about this, it'll make a little more sense. So yes, the pedestrian uh safety features, including the bump outs and the pedestrian activated signals. Uh, it also touches on the active transportation aspect with the inclusion of dedicated separated multimodal lanes. One other factor or area that this project touches on as well is, is the parking alignment along Argyle. You'll see that the new design incorporates parallel parking versus perpendicular. Um, there's a number of times where we see vehicles parked, which are basically interfering with the active mode or active laneway in the roadway. Um, and as well as densification, community building, this area, the, this corridor has been identified within the O C P as an area for densification and we're, we're assisting with that. Um, the scope also includes landscaping and the conversion of the overhead hydro and cabling um overhead to below ground, as well as we'll be incorporating place making into the design as well. So um, one aspect I'd like to highlight for this is that um, the predominant scope for this is the utility replacement and the surface rehab of the project. And if I could ask the director to go to the other page of that layout, it's a little bit too zoomed in at the moment. Um, so we'll be doing full underground replacement between First and Third, as well as full surface rehab uh in that corridor. Uh, an important point to this as well, though, is to tie in between First Avenue and Harbor Road with the multimodal lanes to tie it into the key-to-key pathway. So below that and the previous figure that was just up on the screen, pardon me, uh Sarah, the um, between Kingsway and Harbor Road, we'll simply be doing surface modifications to the existing roadway where we'll be adding bump outs and multimodal lanes. There's no resurfacing, nor is there any utility work as that has already been completed previously. Um, so that's the scope. Uh, moving on to the financial options for this. We've recommended to council that uh the funding for this be split three ways between uh the water and sewer reserve, as well as the general fund. There are, of course, other options available to you as listed under the alternatives uh or options. Um, happy to answer any questions you may have on either scope or the financial uh options too.
Thank you very much. Um, could you give a little bit uh more detail on the importance of this corridor, specifically for our combined sewer overflow um challenges? And as it relates to the sewage lagoon and the commitments that we made to the province in that process?
Through the chair, yes. Thank you for that question. From a high level, um, we are required through legislation to uh separate our, our sewer system, our combined sewer system, excuse me. Um, through work with our consultants, we've identified a number of key areas and the Argyle corridor being one of them is kind of a trunk area that feeds down towards the harbor key and where a major, um, for lack of a better word, intersection of our pipes occurs. Uh, so as part of this project, obviously, that's a, a driving factor. And since we're digging up the road anyway, uh, that's the idea behind the, the surface rehab behind this work. So we would need to do this work anyhow, the below ground, and we're just supporting it with uh all the other factors I mentioned regarding the, the other parameters.
Thank you very much. Councillor Solder.
That's interesting you said that, you know, like um, you got to do the work anyways and you may as well, instead of redigging it in the future, to do whatever you need to do. And a lot of people in Port Alberni complain, used to complain, well, why didn't they do it all in the first place instead of patching it? But anyways, so I'm playing devil's advocate regarding businesses. A lot of few businesses have said, oh, I'm so glad we're not doing Argyle. And um, so where I'm going with that is apparel parking. So we know we have um restaurants and food services there that have trucks that come in and deliver food. So how will that affect them um with apparel parking? And we'll have less people parking in that area because we're not doing the angle parking anymore. So my concern is, and I have actually mentioned to Mike, our C E O at one point, is that um, there's already issues in the parking, even with the angle parking, because it can be really busy on, on Argyle now and it's going to get busier. I have no doubt about that. So how, have we thought about that, the future of that or we'll wait?
I can add a little context. As a previous business owner in the area, I'm happy to not be anymore. And that uh the delivery trucks uh at best stop on Second Avenue and take their stuff regardless of which business they're going to. But unfortunately, like the vast majority of them stop right in the middle of Argyle on a very regular basis. Uh, so this won't have an impact on that. It's extremely inconvenient uh for people in the area um regardless of if it's parallel or um angled parking. Um, it's something, in my opinion, that needs to be worked on with the business owners. Um, though it's usually reasonably temporary, it is always shocking to me when they stop just in the middle of Argyle, which is a busy road. Um, and I will also say as a business owner, uh, that a previous business owner that had angled parking in front of my uh shop that uh somebody did drive right into my building once. Um, and I know that that's happened as well in the angled parking on uh Third Avenue multiple times. Um, someone's also driven into the patio angled parking. So um, it, as, I think people often get nervous about the idea of parallel parking. Um, but angled parking is a consistent problem all over town and certainly not just in this town. So while we do end up losing a space or two, um, we don't have vehicles driving into our businesses and that's nice. So pros and cons for sure. Go ahead, councillor Solder.
Okay, it'll be interesting to see how we handle that. I even mentioned about maybe bringing the, uh, the gentleman that marked the tires, custodians back in the future and um the C E O mentioned will be probably contracted, right? So I don't know. We'll see what happens there. And um, the other one is um the bump outs. And actually with the bump out on the lower of Argyle, it's interesting because I actually do slow down instead of using it like a little, little speed to it. So I, and I see, like, the vision I see after it's all said and done, it's going to be amazing when it's all done. But um, it'll be interesting to see how it'll affect, my, my, my problem is, is how as we start moving along and the construction and everything, Madam Mayor, is it's going to affect the businesses up there and, or down there. And I'm assuming it's going to be in the early summer or spring. And that's probably when they really need to focus on making their dollars.
Thank you. Great question. Do we have a timeline of um if this makes it all the way through approvals, uh, when the construction would actually take place?
Certainly. Yes. Thank you through the chair for the question. Um, assuming approval is granted by council for the funding for this, we would be going for construction in late spring twenty twenty-six, so next year.
So, so again, that's a concern for me and I understand that. We have to do that. It can't do it in the middle of winter and that. It's just, you know, like if the business can't make it in the summer, they're not going to make it in the, the fall. It's going to be very tough and they've gone through tough moments already through the COVID and everything. Just putting it out there.
Thank you. I'll go to our C E O.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think it is very important uh that we'll have to set up uh, uh, the proper uh ways to uh keep on supporting the local businesses and making sure that uh um when we are working there, that it's still safe and accessible. So I know that after this is finished, um, they'll have a lot of other space that they can use for public engagement. Uh, but uh, um, it is important, as you see everywhere, uh, several of us were just in Ottawa and I don't think there was a street that you couldn't go on that wasn't under uh a crane with uh different areas you had to walk under. And uh they went to real, uh, real pains to make sure that you could still access the buildings and not just buildings, also hotels that are multi-stories uh high and also the convention center where F C M was at. So um, I, I think it is something that we have to be conscious of, but making sure that we can uh make our downtown core more functional and renew our uh deep utilities and shallow utilities is very important.
Thank you and thanks for that question, councillor Solder. I think it is extremely important regardless of the upgrade that will come. Uh, I would, you know, that the businesses will benefit from in the future in some capacity to enjoy. And that is a very challenging time for sure. And I know when we were at A B I C C as well, I recall our council walking around fences, trying to get to a restaurant and uh that restaurant was very busy that weekend um as a result of the conference, but did note that the construction, um, because it was a significant construction as well, had been challenging. So um, maybe we can think of some creative ways to direct people and um stage the project, obviously, wherever possible. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh thank you councillor Solder for that, for opening the can of worms. I'd, I hate to bring up stuff where I was a sore loser, but we did talk about this about a year ago and council decided to go with the parallel parking. Um, I'd still like to just say that I am not in favor of the parallel parking option. Um, and the mere fact is, like, just counting right now, we talked about losing a couple of, of parking spots. The north side of Argyle will have from fifteen to eight parking spots or fourteen with a handicap to seven with a handicap parking spot. So um, again, don't want to be a sore loser by, by any means, but um, I just still can't get on side with um a full parallel parking option. Um, I do have a question, though, Mr. McDonald, um, just because we're talking about First to Third, but uh as we saw on the screen, there is um, you know, plans for Harbor Road, um, between Harbor Road and First Avenue through Kingsway. Um, that is, especially with the Thunderbird development, that is all practically brand new, if you want to call it that, in the community based on. So is that work that's going to be included in this project or is that going to be future work done?
Through the chair. Thank you for the question, councillor Mealy. Uh, you'll see in the figure up above, essentially, all the infrastructure between Harbor and Kingsway, to your point, is fairly new and recent. We won't be demolishing or removing any of that. It is simply the addition of the multimodal lane against the existing curb line. So we'd essentially be narrowing the roadway, creating a new curb line and adding the, the bump outs.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Councillor Solder.
Just to, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to go back to what um councillor Mealy was saying regarding peril and angle parking. Um, the purpose for angle uh peril parking, is there a reason or could we switch back to angle parking? You know, I know we're talking about a center and we still back up into, onto the street. I don't know. I'm just putting it out there.
I'll go to our C E O.
Yeah, thanks. Um, on the, when we did the options uh that were brought to council, it, it, in the options that were brought to council, it talked about the safety and uh how angled parking is uh at more of a risk. It's less risk if you were backing into the angle parking and pulling out frontwards. Um, however, a lot of people uh struggle with that as well. Um, so there, there, there is uh different ways of looking at angled parking. Um, part of the idea of uh doing this uh uptown area was also to increase the, the place making, uh reduce speed um and also uh create more usable space out in front of restaurants. So there was quite a thorough discussion. Um, I believe, I'm not sure if we linked that report, but if not, for the council meeting, I can link all those reports and uh make sure that everybody knows when the date, when we discuss that in council. So you can review the memo from the engineer that talked about the different options here and talked about uh also the renewal and cost, uh the different cost uh demographics on the project. And I think that may uh help jog everybody's memory back to when this uh was made because it was about a year and a half ago.
Thank you. Councillor Dame.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I don't really love the idea of reopening a debate on a matter that has been um debated and settled. Uh, but since the one perspective has been represented here, I feel like we need to remind um maybe anybody watching why we arrived at the conclusion that we did and the C E O had just covered some of it. Um, but I, I think that uh the intent here is to um make a transformational change to that area that uh is about getting people out of their cars and wandering around a neighborhood that is now prime for walking, shopping, um, sitting down on a bench under a tree and reading a book, like spending time, place making. Uh, this is what makes an area uh viable for businesses. This is, while there might be some short-term challenges that we are going to have to um work around and, and work with businesses and, and, and address. Um, I think the long-term impact of creating an area like this that will take what we've got with Harbor Key and continue that up, up, up a road, uh, it's going to draw new business. It's going to create a really vibrant area. And I think that that is what we were trying to do and I think that we need to not lose track of that. Um, uh, so, thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Councillor Dame, councillor Solder.
Just so you know, councillor Dame, I, I was just playing devil's advocate, you know, and um representing some people's voices out there. So, but I understand what you're saying and I agree with you, but I still like to play devil's advocate.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments on this? Seeing none. Councillor Haggard? Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to move that council men, city of Port Alberni, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine financial plan bylaw, number five one two three, twenty twenty-five, allocating six million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards redevelopment of Argyle Street between First and Third Avenue with funding from the general fund, water, water infrastructure capital reserve and sewer infrastructure capital reserve in the amount of two million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Capital Reserve, and Sewer Infrastructure Capital Reserve in the amount of $2,125,000 each in the 2026 capital plan.
Thank you very much. Moved by Counselor Haggard, seconded by Counselor Mealy. Any further discussion? Counselor Solder?
Just one quick question on the dollars, because we are taking it out of reserves. And will we be able to apply for grants? I mean, I have read the report and I just want the public to know too.
Coming up on our agenda.
Okay.
We will have that discussion. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other comments on the motion. All in favor. Carried, none opposed. Everybody put their hands up, though. Okay, opposed? I'm certain. I saw your hand up. Maybe it was half up?
No, I was ready.
Okay, you were ready, but your hand was up. So, thank you. All right. Moving on to item three, Franklin River Road Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, moving on to a different project, this is regarding the Franklin River Road Water Main Replacement Project. This is the water main that runs from our Bainbridge Water Treatment Plant into the city boundaries and carries all of our drinking water into our distribution system. The background behind this is that if council will recall, in 2023, there was a motor vehicle incident, whereas a logging truck went over the embankment and severed the aerial section of that pipeline and thereby cutting off all drinking water to the city. Not just because of that, but there's, one of the reasons we're pushing this project forward is just simply for asset management and the useful life of the pipe. So the original pipe was installed in 1962. It's fabricated out of steel. It's approximately 4.65 kilometers from the waste water, or excuse me, the water treatment plant into the city boundaries. We have broken this project down into four phases, basically a little over a kilometer per phase for a couple of reasons, one being simply just the scope, being the size of the project, as well as the dollar value. It's a fairly substantial project to replace all of that. We view this section of pipe from the water plant into the city as probably our most critical, sensitive piece of pipe in our distribution system. The new design will incorporate fused HDP pipe and will be located within the roadway and eliminate, in the first phase, eliminate that aerial section, which was repaired in a temporary manner back in 2023. So you'll see before you two recommendations. And the reason for that, again, is because we've broken the project down into four phases. The first recommendation is around funding Phase One for construction in 2026. The second recommendation's for funding it in 2029, and is to get it in a five-year financial plan. And then, of course, the final two phases will be placed in a longer range, 2030, 2029, and 2031. This project currently, we're recommending to be funded from the water, water reserve 100%. We have discussed quite a bit about reserves this evening. Between the previous project, the Argyle, as well as this Franklin River Road Water Main Replacement Project, and I will be bringing another sanitary project later this summer to council's attention, we will have some deficits between the reserves for funding all three of these projects. With that said, there are other options with grant funding opportunities that we will also be discussing this evening, as well as different funding mechanisms as well. So with that, I will open up to any questions you may have around the scope or the funding options in front of you.
Thank you very much. Could you first just touch on if we received compensation from Mosaic for the accident that happened? And if our infrastructure was repaired only in a temporary way, is there a contribution coming from the company that took out our drinking water and damaged our infrastructure?
I'll perhaps defer to say CAO for the financial portion, but I will say that the repair that was made, we have PVC pipe that is suspended in the air along a steel I-beam. And it's, it's functional, but it's very temporary in nature, which is why we find this, it's a very critical project that needs to be repaired ASAP.
Yeah, agree completely. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, through the Chair. ICBC did pay, but no cost for the event. So, so we don't have any funding from this project from Mosaic. We could approach them about making the permanent fix. And then another option is also with increased traffic going out to Banfield, we can talk to MOTI at UBCM and ask them to cost share the actual road part, not the water main part, but talk about some of the turns on. We're notified in that incident as misalignments and some of the culverts and stuff are aged. So at UBCM, we could take the opportunity to talk to Ministry of Transportation about helping pay for some of the pavement and the road improvements for the road to Banfield. But yeah, so nothing straight from Mosaic. However, for the temporary repair, it was covered by ICBC.
Thank you. I, I think both of those paths to pursue are critical. I think it's completely unacceptable that our most important piece of water infrastructure was left in a temporary state of repair and that there wouldn't be compensation additionally from ICBC, or more specifically from Mosaic. I know that Mosaic is working very hard to be a good community partner, and I think they've made a lot of really positive improvements in how they engage with communities. But I would just say that this is unacceptable. Completely agree 100%. This work needs to be done as soon as possible. And I'm really happy to see some addition, some major infrastructure projects coming forward. I mean, I would rather we do these projects than the funds sit in a reserve. So as much as it's disappointing to see the reserves, you know, go down, this is what those reserves are there for. This is what we've been saving for. So I think this is all positive, but I would very much like to see us pursue a significant, significant contribution from Mosaic for this work. Counselor Mealy and then Counselor Solder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. And I totally agree with all your comments. This is the kind of critical infrastructure projects that the city needs to keep on top of. I had a chance to go out to Bainbridge on a tour with Mr. Fox and Counselor Verugui to get an idea of the watershed and that. And so I took a good look at the pipe on the way by, and it is jerry-rigged. It's, but it's, it's working and I really appreciate everybody who's put the time in to, to keep that pipe going. So, but I totally agree with you, Madam Mayor, is, you know, just we need to hold the feet to the fire and, and get some more compensation if possible. But, but do appreciate staff for coming forward and making this a priority.
Absolutely. Counselor Solder?
Madam Mayor, it shouldn't be if it's possible. It should happen from ICBC. That's bull. Sorry, it is. And, and I'm saying, and call a spade a spade. And the problem is you don't temporarily fix something. If a car is, you smash your car and the ICBC replaces it, they don't give you something that's a lemon. They actually fix it or they replace the car. And I'm having an issue with that. I'm kind of curious to know what kind of dollars that we received for the temporary fix. And I would love to know that amount. And, and how, you know, we know how much it's going to cost to fix it. So this is, this is not the way ICBC should be working. And Mosaic should be all over it too. I mean, it's their truck. Send Mosaic the bill. I'm sure they'll go after ICBC and, or vice versa. This is just not acceptable at all.
Agree completely. Other comments? Okay, Counselor Dane, would you like to read the motion?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. I was ahead on the, on the agenda here, though. I move that council amend the City of Port Alberni 2025 to 2029 financial plan by law number 55123, 2025, by allocating $4,033,000 towards the Franklin River Road Water Main Replacement Phase One with funding from the Water Infrastructure Capital Reserve in the amount of $4,033,000 for completion in 2026. And further, that council amend the City of Port Alberni 2025 to 2029 financial plan by law number 5123, 2025, by allocating $4,444,000 towards the Franklin River Road Water Main Replacement Phase Two with funding from Water Infrastructure Capital Reserve in the amount of $4,444,000 for completion in 2029.
Thank you. Is there a second? Or seconded by Counselor Mealy. Seeing no comments. On the motion, all in favor. Motion carried. Go ahead, Counselor Solder.
Madam Mayor, do we need a motion to ask staff to bring back a report of how much ICBC did actually give us?
I think we'll just ask staff to bring, when this comes to council, because it will come, I assume, to our next meeting of council, we will ask staff to bring that information and to gather as much information as possible before then. Thank you. Okay. We voted on that. Then item number four on this section of the agenda, 2025 UBCM Strategic Priorities Fund.
Madam Mayor and committee, this evening, I'll be presenting the recommended projects that staff proposed the city applied for under the 2025 intake of the Strategic Priorities Fund, or SPF. I'll be using the acronym a fair bit tonight. This intake offers an opportunity to leverage external funding to deliver on key initiatives already identified as local priorities. Staff are seeking the committee's support to recommend that council approve submission of SPF grant applications for two projects outlined in this report. To develop this recommendation, staff from across the organization, including infrastructure services, finance, and IT, asset management, planning, and community safety, took a collaborative approach to reviewing potential project options. Staff assessed each project's alignment with SPF program objectives, readiness for implementation, strategic value to the community, and compatibility with existing master planning efforts and council's priorities. The result is a recommendation to pursue one project under each of the two SPF funding streams. These projects are strategic, high-impact, grant-ready, and backed by strong rationale, all key ingredients for successful SPF application. Just briefly for context, the Strategic Priorities Fund is part of the Canada Community Building Fund administered by UBCM. It supports large-scale infrastructure and capacity-building projects that foster sustainability, innovation, and long-term community benefit. In 2025, a total of $125 million is available, $119 million under the capital infrastructure stream, $6 million under the capacity building stream. Each local government may submit one application per stream for a combined total of up to $7 million. This is up from $6 million in combined funding for the 2022 SPF intake, so they've increased it. The deadline to apply is September 12th, 2025. Projects must begin within two years and be completed within five years of the approval date. And it's anticipated that 2025 SPF intake will be very competitive. Staff are recommending that the city submit an application for the, the Argyle First to Third Avenue redevelopment under the capital infrastructure stream. The Director of Infrastructure has already provided a project brief in his earlier report, so I'll just quickly identify how this project aligns with the SPF capital infrastructure criteria. The project addresses multiple infrastructure systems, as Jim was mentioning, combined sewer separation, road renewal, active transportation improvements, and climate resilience enhancements. It has a strong foundation, the city's stormwater and transportation master planning process. Detailed design is already underway, and proposed construction is anticipated for 2026, aligning well with the SPF readiness requirements. And it supports multiple grant priorities, public health, environmental protection, infrastructure renewal, and sustainable community design. This is a comprehensive, multi-benefit project that demonstrates clear value for grant investment and advances long-term community goals. Given its scale, readiness, and alignment, staff believe this is the city's strongest candidate for the capital stream. For the cap, for the capacity building stream, staff are recommending an application for the development of a community safety and well-being strategy. I'll pass it over to the manager of community safety and social development to provide a project brief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the community safety and well-being portion of the application, we're asking for $100,000. And the key action under, under it would be to create a strategic plan with a number of corporate or partners, community partners, for community safety. That is really the key element of it. The community safety aspect would include housing, crisis response for mental health, and substance use amongst other, other aspects. It's all aligned with the social determinants of health. And those kind of projects take anywhere from 12 to 18 months, but they really identify the key priorities at the end with all the action items that would be critical for our, our community under community safety.
As Mary Claire just indicated, this project aligns with the SPF capacity building criteria in a number of ways. So the strategy would provide a strategic framework for addressing social development and public safety challenges in Port Alberni. It's aligned with the 2023-2027 corporate strategic plan and the broader vision of inclusive, healthy, and complete communities. And the project supports SPF capacity building priorities, including long-term planning, integration, and community engagement, and social resilience. Finally, the project is a key action item under the council, under council's community safety and social development priorities. And it will complement other efforts around community safety, housing crisis response, supports for mental health, and substance use. In conclusion, staff are recommending that the committee endorse submission of the following two SPF applications: Argyle First to Third Avenue redevelopment under the capital infrastructure stream, and the community safety and well-being strategy under the capacity building stream, for a total potential of $6.475 million in grant funding. These projects have been carefully selected based on readiness, strategic alignment, and eligibility. Staff are asking for the committee's support to recommend that council authorize staff to proceed with both applications. In terms of next steps, subject to council's endorsement, staff will proceed with detailed application development ahead of the September 12th submission deadline. And that is it for, for my presentation. I'd have to take any general questions or feedback on the 2025 SPF intake. And I believe Jim and Mary Claire can answer any project-specific questions that the committee may have.
Great. Thank you very much for the excellent report. Are there any questions? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. Just perhaps on the, sorry, and I apologize here, the community safety and well-being strategy, I just want to confirm, if it's all great to ask, the manager of community safety and social development, if I got that right, is, it says grant only at this time. So if we are not successful at the grant, will this project go ahead, or are we waiting for a grant?
At this point, we're looking for the grant application and the funding. And certainly, we don't have the funds in our budget for the, for the plan or the strategic plan. So this is the first attempt at trying to get some grant funding.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Solder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to go back to Mary Claire there, regarding the grant, haven't we done something similar to something like, to what is going to be asked, the reason for the grant, you know, like to do the study and all that? We've done other studies, haven't we? That, or have they been just piece?
Yeah, through the Chair. I don't believe we've done this, this specific study that we're looking at. There are other studies that have been done in community and by the province that would feed into this, but we don't have an action-oriented plan for the city in, in the community safety and social development area. I know that Mary Claire has worked and applied for another grant for similar work, but we did not receive that grant when that was applied for. So in moving forward, we, we do believe in the capacity stream, that this is the, the best way forward in meeting council's goal of safety in our city.
Okay, it's just where I'm going with this is, at the end of the day, we can do the study, but then, then what do we do with it? Because it's going to take, it's going to cost. Oh, I see. You have a comment through the mayor.
Perhaps I could clarify. It's not actually to do a study. It's to develop a plan, a strategy. And there'd be several elements to the, the planning component. Several, first off, I must say that I've been researching with a number of communities, and this is the way a number of communities are going. Recently, I had a great conversation with Campbell River. And, and the planning process really helped them clearly identify what their strategic goals would be moving forward, to improve safety in their community. The first element is sort of at the governance level, creating an advisory committee, the work plan, looking at data and statistics. That's really quite key. Conduct of community and public engagement, drafting the plan, identifying the priorities, developing the reporting tools, finalizing the plan, and really incorporating a key element of evaluation. So through all of that, we'd have the metrics, we'd have the reporting metrics, we would be able to, to tailor it to our community. Because the way it works is by doing this in such a because the way it works is by doing this in such a way, you're actually tailing it to your, tailoring it to your local needs and involving all your community partners. It's not just a plan for the city. It's a plan for all of the city, including all of our partners and the nations.
Okay, thank you. I understand that. And it's just frustrating because I'd like to see it done now type of thing and because we do have lots of issues and it's happening now and it will continue to happen, we know that. And it's a grant and I understand that too. Madam Mayor, I would also like to see that we let our MLA and MP, they could probably do some lobbying for us when we submit, if we approve. Thank you.
Absolutely. Counselor Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate the time that staff has put into coming up with a few options for us for these grants. And I definitely agree with their recommendations. So with that said, I'm just going to go ahead and make these motions if I could. I move that the committee of the whole recommend that council authorize staff to submit an application for the 2025 UBCM Strategic Priorities Fund Capital Infrastructure Stream for the Argyle First to Third Avenue redevelopment project and therefore commits to the city of Port Alberni providing overall grant management and supporting any potential cost overruns associated with the project.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Dean, seconded by Counselor Solda. Any discussion on the first motion? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed, and proceed to the second.
And I move that the committee of the whole recommend that council authorize staff to submit an application for the 2025 UBCM Strategic Priorities Fund Capacity Building Stream for the development of a community safety and wellbeing strategy and therefore commits to the city of Port Alberni providing overall grant management and supporting any potential cost overruns associated with the project.
Moved by Counselor Dean, seconded by Counselor Solda. Any discussion? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Wonderful. Thank you and thanks so much for the reports. Okay, item number five, 2025 to 2029 Financial Plan Amendments. The next three and a half pages of our agenda. Welcome, Andrew.
All right. Thanks for your patience there. Today, we have a large financial plan amendment, but it's an amendment that has no impact on the taxation for 2025. There's a couple items that we will find in the report that are affecting 2026 and future years, but we'll identify those and go over those for the committee. So in 2025, there was an allocation for the retro pay and the collective agreement that was ratified April 1st, 2025. With that, there was some reliance on the surplus from the prior year because those funds were budgeted and assigned for those projected increases in the collective agreement. With that, there was $450,000 that was identified in surplus from general funds. We do have some water and sewer retro pay that had to be calculated and those would come from those funds. So within the general fund, so the operations of a lot of the city's public works and staff here at City Hall, across the whole organization, that accounted for about $560,000 of retro pay that was in 2024, plus some impacts from the collective agreement in 2025. So with that, the surplus was short by about $110,000. The recommendation that you'll find today is listing 110 coming from contingency. So the surplus from 2024 plus the contingency of 110 would cover the amendments that are listed here in the three pages that go through each line item. And the intent of that is to ensure that when we are looking at our financial plan and our managers are managing their budgets, those line items will now have the financial authority or the financial space to manage what was planned based on the current level of service in each area. So that's why you'll see each line item increased by that based on what was calculated on the retro from 2024 and what we project for the rest of 2025. So I do apologize for the length of the resolution that Counselor Mealy will have to read tonight. We will be patient. So those are the largest components of the financial plan amendment that you see today. Going into some housekeeping, it was identified in the financial plan that the Financial Purchasing Administration really wasn't within financial administration. It was a public works function. And because we are looking at levels of service, we're making the recommendation that we move that from financial administration to public works because, all intents and purposes, that is the cost of providing service at public works. When we look at some other items, such as the chiller, we made a commitment to move forward. But within that commitment, there wasn't that clear identification of where the funding was coming from. So the recommendation tonight is to take that $285,000 from the Parks and Rec Reserve. Another component that we were looking at as far as housekeeping and cleanup was the Bird Street work that is currently being done. We have that funded for the $2.4 million. But the recommendation is to put it under one line item that provides that clarity when we are comparing budget to actual incurrence of expenditure. We did make a commitment to the additional $3,000 from the reconciliation funding that we provide every year for work with our nations. And the welcome sign was assigned that $3,000. But in the budget, we just want to make sure that that budget line item is clear in the capital project. So that's another housekeeping item. We've seen some master planning details brought forward with some resolutions. Just to consolidate that and make it clear, the reallocation of the $1.05 million is within the recommendation to the committee, to the council, to allocate the master planning. No change in any financial plan or increase in budget, but just confirming that in a clear way. Also, when we look at our consolidated financial plan, or sorry, our consolidated financial statements, we see that there's often a discrepancy between actuals and budgets. And one item is the amortization within that. So we would like to add amortization, a cost estimate for amortization, based on what we would normally occur in each year so that our consolidated statements would more reflect what our expenditures are. Amortization is a non-cash item. So there's no budgetary change, but it does provide a reflection of the asset that we're using in the year. And that would be, I think, beneficial to see if we are putting money away in our capital reserves, renewing our capital in alignment with that amortization that's occurring every year. So it's not a direct link, but it is a good indicator. Also, there's a few projects within water and sewer. I won't list them off exactly, but they had to do with some of the bird work and some work along that way. But we're not proceeding with those. And then basically some transition to the surface work and some of the items that have been done over the years. So removing those items and some money that was left over for Third Avenue storm and then putting that back into the reserve. So that'll be available for the work that we'd be doing on Argyle, on Josephine and even Bainbridge. So it's not money that is, you know, going to be used in anywhere else but the funds to which it came from. So if it was a gas tax item or a growing communities fund, we would return those funds to the reserve or the intent to where it should be. Now going on to the items that are not housekeeping and they will have a financial plan impact in 2026. And the first one is the RCMP increase. So on April 1st, we did receive the amended five-year financial plan from the RCMP. And as the report indicates, we did see an increase and that wasn't planned, obviously, and is a further increase to the 2026 impact for the financial plan. So when we look at that line item, it is another 0.75% increase in the financial plan for the RCMP, which is another $271,000 for 2026 over what we originally planned. There is also the desire to use the surplus funds from 2024 for the public works roof. That was something that we didn't have the funding for because we did have overages in both the RCMP and the fire and some other areas within the financial plan that used up some of that room that we were going to look to use that public works roof renewal for. The good news with that is that it wasn't as much as we did have in the financial plan for the roof replacement. The unfortunate event was that we don't have the surplus there. So we would have to borrow those funds from the water reserve until we could repay those back in 2026 is the recommendation. But council, you have every other option, including pulling from reserves or looking at surplus in 2025 to support that, which I did not mention in the staff report. So with that, there could be other options, but we can have that discussion. And then just noting that there wasn't an approval in principle that was due today to the RCMP that administration held back on sending in, given that we would like to have this discussion with the committee and possibly council on the authorized strength and the impact to our financial plan. Because this is the second year that it's happened where we've seen approximately a quarter million dollars plus increase in the contract costs that, you know, it is the largest item in the financial plan. So we do have to have an adjustment made and it's a significant dollar value for the city of Port Alberni. There is, in the recommendation, I did note that the train station ventilation is one item that we hadn't listed, but we did list it. I just didn't realize it was listed in the Parks and Rec Reserve overall. So we'd like to create a train station line item, just like we have for all the other assets, so we can track what is being spent in each line item. So there's some clarity, even I missed that there. So that's one adjustment that I'd like to make for the recommendation. And that was it that I had on my list to discuss and provide an overview to the committee. So if there's any questions that the committee has, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Petola first. Actually, can I just clarify? I don't see the RCMP change in the long list of amendments. I see the information in the report, which is great. I just didn't see it in the list, in the motion. So I just wasn't sure if that is intended to be in the amendments or if it would be considered. And we can consider it separately regardless, but...
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's a good point and I apologize for not putting that in there. My intent was to. So if we could take the values that are in Schedule A for the financial plan and include those in as an add-on to the recommendations to the council, we'll ensure that those resolutions go to council with the full impact for 2026 to 2029.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the committee of the whole recommend council amend the city of Port Alberni 2025 to 2029 Financial Plan Byline Number 5123, 2025 as follows. Items I through CVIIII as set out in the agenda with such alterations as verbally added by the director.
Thank you. Is there a seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Mealy. Discussion? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, though there is 108 line items here, either to increase or decrease. So thank you, Counselor Petola, for making that streamlined. But for everybody online, it is on the agenda and it is part of the agenda package, starting on page 69.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion?
Well, I would just like to at least have some discussion about an unforeseen addition of a quarter of a million dollars to the RCMP budget. Noted that this is the second year that it has happened. Additionally, we also had a late addition to the 2025 budget outside of the change that came to the contract last year. And that was a reasonably late request to add, I think it was, well, two infrastructure projects and then an additional staff person as well. I am extremely concerned, you know, like all of you, and we've had many conversations about this. I think nobody underestimates the need for the service and even the need to increase the service. But I am extremely concerned about the cost escalations because this is by far our largest cost factor as a municipality. We don't spend anywhere near the amount that we spend on RCMP on any of the services that we, the valuable services that we are responsible for as a municipality. I think it's 22% of our budget. Yeah, currently, it's a lot. And it's increasing year over year at a rate faster than most of our other services. So I'm really concerned about the long-term ability for us to keep incurring these costs when we are not increasing our level of service. Because as we know, our need for the service is going up. The RCMP are working extremely hard in our community. I, you know, I think we should have probably been much more excited about the community safety strategy brought forward by the manager of public safety a few minutes ago because that's the work we need to be investing in. And because we need to find a way out of these extremely increasing escalating costs, not by getting rid of the RCMP, not by, you know, but by not having such a significant need for RCMP in our community by improving our public safety in ways outside of only investing in RCMP. We've had this discussion before and while RCMP are an extremely important part of the public safety picture, they are not the whole picture and we end up reasonably unable to invest in any kind of meaningful way in other pieces of the picture because the RCMP budget is going up so quickly and in such a significant way. I do think it's important to note that our community has spearheaded bringing back together the group of communities like ours who also struggle with much higher-than-average RCMP costs in their communities. I think we've had good feedback to that meeting. I know we've had quite a bit of attention on that issue from media as well. And, you know, in all of the interviews I've done, the feedback that I've gotten has been, there has to be a better way to fund this. Not, we need less RCMP. Nobody thinks that. I mean, we'd love to have that problem where we have too many RCMP, but we know that that's not the reality of the problem in our community. But there has to be a more equitable way to fund it because penalizing communities with socioeconomic challenges who also tend to have, you know, I would say, the lowest ability to pay as a result of high poverty rates that tend to go along with that, unfortunately, is just not the way forward. So we have brought many motions to UBCM and while I think they've been great attempts and I've personally had tons of meetings with the Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General over the years, those initiatives have not gotten us results and not gotten us change. So I am optimistic that bringing together a group of communities to speak with a united voice will make a difference. But I have a really hard time today, especially with extremely limited information that we've been provided on this cost. It's just a contract increase. It's not an increase in level of service. We're not investing more in public safety in our community. We're just spending more. So I have a hard time passing this today without giving more thought and maybe requesting more information on the cost escalations because it has been multiple. That said, I understand this goes to council and so, you know, I guess I'm okay with sending it along to council for more discussion and potentially more information. I really don't want to make this about the cost of RCMP and, you know, that being a, coming off as a dissatisfaction with the service because that's very much not it. But I have a real concern about just the formula and the inequity, or inequable funding between the municipality and regional district and the province and the federal government and just the formula as it exists today and concern that at some point, we, 50% of our budget is going to be RCMP. Like, it is increasing extremely fast. And I know in the report, it said the new cost of, full, you know, built-in cost of a member is going to be $261,000 a year. And I think it's really important to note, that is not salary. That is the loaded cost with the vehicle and everything else. But I recall when I started on council, it was $160,000. it was 160,000. And so that is an extreme increase. And I, just like any other service where we see this level of increase, I think we have to pause and ask if there's more that we can do to look at different models of funding or different services that we can provide to support this one that may have different cost structures. I think we need to pause and look for something else that we can do rather than just approving every increase we get. So those are just all my thoughts, and I will pass it over to Council Petola for all his thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to know that you are of firm opinion on this issue, as I think probably most of council is. I'm not sure that in process, this is exactly the point in time as your worship is recognized. I would be supporting this motion today for the purposes of developing the financial plan, which is different than developing the safety plan, which is different than developing the policing plan. Although I fully agree with all of your worship's comments with regards to there needs to be more work done and more information provided. What that information is, I'm not exactly sure what we would be asking for at this point in time. Certainly, RCMP services are a bit of a wild cult that needs to be broken and brought into service for the community instead of just being a runaway, out-of-control issue. Although I do see that certainly this council has been making headway in trying to find those answers. I think it may take a little bit longer. And I, so for the purposes of just the financial planning, I'm quite happy to refer this to to council for the purposes of increasing the safety of this community, which I should say, I think, is already very well addressed and that it is a safe community. But looking to the future and looking to reduce costs and keeping it a safe community is something that we should be continuing with our efforts in developing further tools with, such as the public safety report or funding for the plan, not the report, misspoke there. And the continued development of bylaw services and continuing development of streetscapes to increase safety and the continuing development of the Bulldogs, who are an important part of the community, that make it make it a united community, which is a safe community. Thank you.
Thank you. Agree completely. Council Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of notes written down here, but I was afraid to open up this can of worms, so thank you for opening it. We had talked previously about having a consultant come in and do an audit of RCMP cost. Do you know if that's been done yet, or have we gone down that path?
CEO.
Yeah, through the chair, thank you for the question. We are working on what exactly would be audited. So we're working with the communities that we've done outreach with. And Andrew is, sorry, the Director of Finance is working on some of those KPIs, the metrics that RCMP use to measure our service and how they would be audited. There are other communities that have went down that path, and I think learning from them will cost us less in the long term. So I think the united front of reaching out to these communities has already paid off in dividends from some meetings. But I believe that some of the communities also want to meet us at UBCM and have further discussion. And I know that we are scheduling a meeting coming up too, so we can have several meetings before we dive into doing a full request for that audit.
And just if I'm not phrasing this correctly, please correct me, Madam Mayor. When the officer in charge did a presentation to the Regional District on statistics for the Regional District, she made a comment that if RCMP officer is called to the Regional District and a person is having mental health issues, the RCMP takes that person to the hospital. If that officer has to stay at the hospital for two hours, for example, till they see a doctor and can hand over that person, that amount that is charged to the city, because the city is in
Because the hospital is.
The hospital is within the city, but really, our thought is because that person lives in Beaver Creek, it should be charged to Beaver Creek. And we were going to look into that. I was warning you that had been looked into.
Yeah, through the chair, thank you. I did gain some clarification and insight from our OIC, but also it comes down to the metrics that are coded that the province provides the members. So again, through that, this is where we have to understand what we're going to audit, when we audit it, so we're asking the right questions. And so through that example, I got some, gained some really good insights into some of the faults, that it's not necessarily the OIC that it's actually allocating the funding. That goes to the province, and then the province is doing it. And sometimes the easiest way for the province to do it may be to shift some to the municipality. So again, it's understanding the full story, and I think we're working through that, but we don't want to we want to make sure when we do an audit and have the information provided that we're pulling on the right strings.
Yeah, and I mean, that really is the crux of the issue. Back to the provincial allocations of policing costs. And regardless of whether it's an OIC decision, which I'm certainly glad to hear it is not, or a provincial decision, a resident of Beaver Creek, I mean, it was made extremely clear in that ACRD meeting, and Council Haggard and I started texting each other going, what? What was just said? A resident of Beaver Creek or any other area of the Regional District phones, or somebody phones 911, has a mental health call, the city residents, the city taxpayers, pay the cost of that time that the RCMP sits at the hospital with that person. And that's extremely important care for that person to have, and there's lots of reasons why that RCMP member has to stay there. But there is absolutely no way that that time should be billed to the city. These are the types of things that we have to address, and I agree completely with Council Petola. It's not through this amendment, but it is through starting to ask a lot more questions, because there's a reason these costs are increasing and escalating at such a rapid rate, and we just can't have it anymore. So whether it's, you know, it's changed to the billing on a provincial side, a mechanism there that is completely outside of the Policing Act, or it's a change to the funding formula within the Policing Act, there is something significant that needs to change. Yeah, it's really frustrating because I think we keep hearing more and more examples of situations like this. And, I mean, our Director of Finance has provided the numbers to us so many times. It's, you know, an average of $700 per home, cost of RCMP for the city of Port Alberni, and an average of $60 for a home in Beaver Creek, while the city of Port Alberni is billed for mental health calls. It just, there's so many issues like this, and, you know, I know the residents of Beaver Creek took this as an argument against them. It is not. It's not the residents of Beaver Creek or any other area of the Regional District, or the staff, or the directors, or anyone else doing anything wrong. This is how the funding formula exists today that is inequitable. So this is an argument with the provincial government, not that we want to make it an argument, but it needs to get addressed, and it just can't go on like this anymore. Councilor Dame, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate this discussion, though it's been had a number of times, but it's going to probably be had a few more times. And I think that, so I agree with everything that's been said, but I think it also, and you alluded to this a couple of times as well, but I think it needs to be reiterated before this council gets labeled as, you know, RCMP haters or whatever, that we do very much appreciate the work that the RCMP members do in our community, and we know how much that we rely on them and how important they are. And that our issue is not with the RCMP in general, or with the members, or with the good work that they do. It is specifically with the fairness and the sustainability of the funding model. And so just wanted to reiterate that so that the right people feel supported and know where we're coming from.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, I was just going to say no more questions, but go ahead, Council Solta.
I had my hand up when you started talking at the beginning. So, Madam Mayor, regarding the B.C. Local Government RCMP Contract Management Committee, that would be a great place to start when I sat on that committee. And I went back in my old meeting notes and stuff back in the day. This has come up before. This is nothing that's new when they were looking at the green timbers at that time. But I wonder if that's a good place to start, because that's one of their mandates is to talk about that. Their wage and the increases and stuff like that. And we've really never ever sent any correspondence to them per se, although they're the umbrella of the UBCM. But I think targeting the RCMP group, the committee would be a great start too.
CEO.
Yeah, thank you. After the last time we discussed this, we did send a letter, and we actually nominated one of our counselors to be part of that committee. We have since received feedback, but we do have a meeting coming up in about three weeks. On that, however, they did also indicate in the letter they aren't looking for new members. But we are going to start with a conversation and see where that goes.
Madam Mayor, I agree. Membership in there is really hard to get into and that committee. But that's great, because that's where we need to target. And then, you know, it's a great starting place and discussion, and we have ministers there and everything too, so I think it's great.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other comments on the motion, and just as, just for clarity, everything that's written, plus the schedule that was included for RCMP, moved and seconded on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thanks, everyone. And thank you, Andrew. Onto item number six, McLean Mill and Historic Zone.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Committee. The purpose of this report is to provide the Committee of the Whole with an update on a number of safety issues in the historic portion of the McLean's Mill that were identified by the Chamber and are outlined in Appendix B of your report. It's important to note that these required safety repairs are not restorative, but are integral to keeping the site safe and open to the public. Any restoration work would be additional to this report in scope. Some of the recommended repairs include fencing off the sawmill and the green chain portions of the site with a rustic fencing. That is due to many of the issues identified or located within the sawmill itself. So fencing off the entire site would allow continued viewing from a safe distance. While some of the other smaller repairs are intended to address smaller safety issues directly that will allow the public to continue limited access they currently experience. So with that, staff are recommending that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council direct staff to complete safety upgrades to the McLean Mill National Historic Site for $50,000 with funding from the McLean Mill Reserve. And that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council direct staff to develop a five-year strategy for restoration and remediation upgrades, incorporating the recommendations listed in Appendixes A and B of the McLean Mill Historic Zone report dated June 16, 2025. But I would also like to suggest to the committee that they should not recommend to council to proceed with directing staff to develop a five-year strategy for restoration upgrades if council elects to not allocate the capital funding that would be required to carry out these upgrades. Finally, a third option remains that the Committee of the Whole could recommend to council to direct staff to cease all capital projects throughout the entire McLean National Historic Site and close it off to the public. These safety items are imperative that we address. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the committee or to review any of the safety issues mentioned in Appendix B.
Thank you very much, Rob. Are there questions or discussion? Council Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the report. Thank you very much, Mr. Cranaville. I guess just the question from me to staff or anybody is, obviously, we have a contract with the Chamber of Commerce, and have they given, this report has obviously been out, the agenda's been out since Thursday, have we had any correspondence from the Chamber of Commerce or any comments?
I did meet recently, a week or so ago, with Jolene from the Chamber of Commerce. And not specific to this report, but recognizing that it was coming, and she's, of course, familiar with the John Dam report and the work that needs to be done out there. She did express the importance of the safety work. Now, I don't, I can't speak to specifically if there's alignment on exactly what needs to be done, but I think everybody recognizes that safety is first and foremost, you know, the next steps on what we actually do as in, as far as restoration. I think in a general sense, the Chamber as the stewards of that area and showcasing what it is would like to see us restore as much as possible out there. But I think there'll be more opportunity for discussion with the Chamber in the reasonably near future. Council Solta.
I agree with you, Madam Mayor, about safety first. I just feel like sometimes we're just putting a Band-Aid on a big problem, you know, that's going to fester. I'm just kind of curious to know if there's any future, foreseeable future, we see any grants for restorations of historic sites at all.
CEO.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I know we keep our eyes out for any grants. And also, we have applied for grants and not been successful through, I believe it's a museum or heritage fund that we have been applying for. However, this isn't a highly funded area through grants. But if there were one, we would bring it to council's attention, and we would apply immediately for it. I know also the Chamber does keep its eyes open for funding opportunities. However, there is, there isn't a lot of them out there. So again, some of the costs that are outlined in the report are fairly major. So again, if council wants us to start restoring, that's where we recommend to bring back a plan on how to do that. But for this summer, I believe that we have an obligation, not only to the Chamber, but to the public, to make the safety fixes. And as you see, a lot of the recommendations actually are from the Chamber too. They agree. And Mr. Cranaville and the Chamber have talked about them. And that's why we're recommending to deal with these immediately, to make sure it's safe for public to continue using the site before we look at what we're going to do out there in a capital sense.
Well, I totally agree, and I have no doubt staff is looking for grants and stuff like that. The other thing too is I believe it's the 100th anniversary coming up next year. Is it the 100th? So it's a big thing that's going to be happening. I'm sure it's going to be very, very busy for that event.
Thank you. Council Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I totally agree, safety first, obviously, and reducing the liability for the city if there's any problems out there. I've had a couple of good, long walks out there recently, and it's not what it used to be, that's for sure. And it just gets older and deteriorating more. So I can appreciate this. I guess, oh, my other question was, and I apologize, just, I probably should ask Mr. McGifford, but do we know how much is in the McLean Mill Reserve at this point? I didn't. Sorry, maybe I didn't see that.
I'm pretty sure it's $46,000.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that.
Thank you. Council Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's probably not the most popular position ever to have been taken, but I have said before, and I'll probably say it again, my position is not one more penny. This site should be fenced to make it safe and revisited once the city is rich and has lots of money coming in. But not until then. And even at the rate of $50,000, that's still not even being covered by the amount that we collect from the pittance of a percentage on sales of merchandise out there. That doesn't even include, that doesn't even get close to covering the 100,000 plus. And I'll say it that way, because it's much more, it's plus, 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 that we pay to another organization so that they can make money at the site. It's the most ludicrous business arrangement I have ever heard of. And it is simply draining the city's coffers. It's drained the city's coffers to the tune of over $25 million, and it continues to drain it. It's nice to know that that gush away from the dam. It's nice to know that that gush away from the dam is now down to a trickle. But it's still just adding yearly more and more money that comes out of the taxpayer's pocket and doesn't produce anything except the need for more repairs. So at this point in time, I will simply reiterate a previous position that I took, which is not one more penny. We have to stop this. And I think stop it now because I wanted to stop it before, but that didn't happen. So I can say stop it now.
Thank you, Counselor Petola. Counselor Dame.
Thanks. Yeah, and Counselor Petola's words certainly resound with me as well, just in that I feel like this has been such a challenge for so long. And at some point, we need to make some sort of decision on the future of McLean Mill. And, you know, whether that's immediately or soon, I'm not sure. But I think that it just comes down to, we have talked endlessly about how limited our funds are right now and how we have all of these competing priorities. And I think that our priorities have to be things that add vibrancy to the immediate community. And it's, and it's not, it's not in the immediate community. And so I certainly would, would be not opposed to considering some of the more, or the more drastic option here as well.
Thank you. Good discussion. I think this is a very challenging issue. And I think I've said the same words in a different way as Counselor Petola in the past. I think that what I always struggle with on McLean Mill is thinking, one thing I've said in the past is that the Outlook 2020 Report, which was a report that was done many, many years ago, looking at what we wanted our community to be in 2020. And very little of it was completed until actually recently, we started to do a lot more of it. But that report, one of the comments in it was Port Alberni looks like a garbage dump when you drive through it. And I just, like, that always really stuck out to me that that was in a report. But, you know, I don't agree with that in that sense. But I think what that is saying is we have not invested in this town. And I often think, what if we had invested $25 million in improving Port Alberni instead of in McLean Mill? And I know you're throwing $25 million out as an estimate, but that would be approximately my estimate as well. And I know we've had lots of reports over the years that have tried to put a number on it and that you can't put a number on it because you can't capture all of the staff time. You can't, you know, we can capture some of it, absolutely, and some of it is captured. But, you know, I think there was a year where our C.A.O., different C.A.O., spent probably half of his hours working on McLean Mill. And we don't capture things like that. So the cost of McLean Mill has been beyond significant to the city of Port Alberni. That said, I think my view has shifted a bit to maybe back slightly from that because I think that the Chamber of Commerce has done a fantastic job of bringing life back to McLean Mill. And while it may not be what it used to be, because, you know, it's not an active sawmill anymore, and it's not gonna be again. And, you know, that, that was the vibrancy of it. It was, it was magical out there when the shows were going on. And, you know, maybe we can see some of that with the steam donkey show at some point. But it is not what it used to be, but it is still a very special place. And the money that we provide to the Chamber of Commerce now for them to effectively program the area for us, is how I view it, is a fraction of what we have provided to other groups in the past in the time I've been on council. It is, it is a fraction on an ongoing basis. So I feel like we have, for the first time, gotten, not for the first time, I shouldn't say that because there's been a lot of people who have put a lot of hard work into McLean Mill. But for the first time, I feel quite satisfied with what's going on out there. I have just been corrected that we have $140,000 in the R.C., or in, sorry, the McLean Mill Reserve. But that is not just the heritage fees. I was thinking of the heritage fees. That is with the funds that we get from the Regional District and a couple other sources as well. But Counselor Petola is right. It is not enough to cover the things that need to be done out there, not even a starting point. So I do think we have to have a hard conversation about what the future is. My preference would be that today we consider the safety improvements. I think those are critical. I agree completely with our C.A.O. We owe it to the Chamber, who we have an agreement with. And we also owe it to the members of the public who love to be out there, for whatever reason. A lot of people aren't out there engaging with heritage. They're out there because it's an incredible park for our community and a great site with a lot of assets. I would like to, I would love to see us have a five-year strategy for restoration. I appreciate our manager's comment that if you don't plan to do the work, don't ask us to put together the plan. I'm paraphrasing. But I think that makes a lot of sense. I would love to see us have that plan, but I think we need to determine first if we're gonna commit to the future of the site. And for me personally, I actually would like to commit to the future of the site. I think we probably need to. However, before we go to that second motion, I think we need to have a sit-down with the Chamber of Commerce. We need to align on what the visions are. We need to give them certainty if they're gonna continue to be the operator out there so that they can program it as best possible so that we can get the most value out of it. So my preference would be just that we pause, maybe that we defer the second motion today. Not that we, and take no action on it until we do a little bit more diligence to get aligned on a plan as much as we can. And if there's, you know, areas that we're not happy with, then we should address those. But I think we are getting more value out of that site for our community than we have in a long time. And I would like to see us be able to try to get aligned on that because I think the more aligned we are, the more value we can get from that operator. If we can give them the certainty, maybe it's not restoration of the site, but it's steady improvement of the site. Counselor Mealy, and then Counselor Dame, and Counselor Haggard.
Everybody gets a run at it, so I'll be quick then. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And that's why I asked about the Chamber of Commerce because I feel the same way as you, is there's finally getting our bank for our buck out there. But I do understand the comments around, especially from Counselor Petola and Counselor Dame, that, you know, there's been a lot of money put into this site over the years. And I'll, and I'll be honest, and I'm with you as well, it's never gonna be what it used to be. I don't see us cutting wood there, you know, huge chunks of lumber. And even the steam donkey, I, just with the IHS and the discussions I've had, I highly doubt that if it was gonna happen this year, it's not gonna happen at all just because of the aging workforce and needing of a spar tree and all that stuff. So, so I would agree with you, Madam Mayor. And again, just working with the Chamber of Commerce and making that site somewhat viable and a place that the community can still be proud of.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Dame.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and thank you for your comments. I think that there are some big frustrations about this site. And I do agree that we need to make sure that we are being aware and respectful of some of the partnerships and obligations that we have tied up to it. And I do agree that the Chamber has managed to do some good things with some pretty minimal resources out there. So I'm happy to see that. I was going to make the first motion, but seeing that everybody else has comments as well, I will hold off and we'll see where we get.
I'll come back to you. Counselor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Counselor Petola and also agree with the mayor. Every time I go out to McLean Mill, I think, where did all this money go? But the problem is, nobody knows where it went. In those days, there was no reporting, there was no accounting given to the city. So we don't know where it went, unfortunately. But like it or not, the city is stewards of McLean Mill. And I agree, the Chamber of Commerce has done a fantastic jobs since they've taken over the operations of the McLean Mill. And I just remind everybody, how many movies have been filmed at McLean Mill the last few months? Which brings huge economic benefits to everybody in our community. So we're finally being recognized. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Soltta.
Yes. Okay, so I kind of, I do agree with everyone. I remember when I first got elected that I wanted to bring the money down. And we did. And it was going down, down, down of what we were giving. But I also look at, Madam Mayor, we have Paper Mill Dam, and we have the Somas Park, and we have McLean's Mill. They're all in the ACRD, in Seaton Park, sorry. And what's more valuable to us? You know, we have an obligation because we signed the paperwork for, for the McLean's Mill, which I still think we should be talking to the feds about that. We need to, I mean, there's so much on our plate here, you know. And, and we had sort of discussions on it. We're not there yet. And what do we do? You know, I agree with, the Chamber of Commerce is trying their best and with what they have and the money that's allocated for McLean's Mill, and good for them for doing that. When I look at the pictures, and I can't wait to go see it on Wednesday, Wednesday, and do a little more of a tour because I'm looking at McLean's Mill and I'm going, oh, my God. You know, like, it's going down, down, down. We see the buildings, what state they're in. And I've had tours of the buildings in the past and, and the conditions that some things were left blew me away. But again, we still have other parks in ACRD. And we are contributing a lot of money. And I agree, safety is first. That, but there's other parks that need some, you know, we've closed off different areas in the parks and stuff like that. So just thought I'd throw that in the mix.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Soltta. Good mix. Throw it into the mix. The, this gives, this gives me a headache. And I'm not here to chastise past councils or present councils or present managers or anybody like that. But this strikes me as a issue that we have absolutely no idea what we're talking about. The, and I'm no expert on it either. But the concept of preserving industrial history in a post-industrial city is one of memories. And appeasing certain contingents of the population because they have emotional ties, not because it makes financial sense. Not because it necessarily makes historical sense. We can preserve it as it is, put a fence around it so nobody goes in and gets injured. And note that we're talking about the historical zone, not the non-historical zone. The non-historical zone is where the Chamber has a contract to do something that we pay them a lot of money for. So we need to be clear, first of all, what we're talking about. Second of all, we need to be clear as to what we're talking about. Not in the sense of zones, but in the sense of what is a post-industrial historic testament supposed to look like? So, just so happens, I'm reading a big book on the issue, which means I know nothing. But interestingly enough, the postcard city for post-industrial redevelopment is Lowell, Massachusetts. Lowell, Massachusetts was a place where cotton mills were originally established because of its access to water. It was a thriving place until all the cotton mills went south to where cheaper labor was. Lowell was reimagined through huge amounts of government infrastructure and funding into a national historic park. But that park only exists because of continued huge amounts of national and state-level funding. It's questionable what the park actually preserves. So my conclusion, from what I have read in this book, is that if you're going to develop a historical site, it's not just a matter of putting up boards when they fall down and replacing machinery when it gets rusty. It's a matter of establishing, what is the message that you are trying to present in your historical zone? And how do you most effectively convey that message? Knowing that that message is tainted in and of itself because it's not a clear history of what everyone who has an emotional attachment to the site will feel is the appropriate history of the site. You can have a site where you focus on the exploitation of workers for low wages and how that's affected the community, resulting in unionization. You can focus on how the site was used for the internment of Japanese Canadians and the war side of the site. So you could focus on a lot of things. And I keep looking kind of across the way here at people that are much more skilled, knowledgeable, and educated in the preservation of history than I am. What this site, I conclude, will never be is anything other than a recipient of public funds. So no matter what you do, the historic site will be a recipient of public funds. Will the entire land have to not be a park and have to be, have to exclude people? You know, taxpayers of Port Alberni? No. The historical area can be preserved in history, frozen, as it were, fenced off, and people can see it. The remainder of the park, which is a much larger physical area, can still be accessible to all the wonderful people that like to go out and enjoy the nature and the other amenities that that site offers. So we can achieve both for the purpose in the time being of not spending more money, except for the cost of fencing, and still allowing individuals to enjoy a city-owned park outside of city limits. So, and then, and then, we still have the opportunity to seek educated guidance on what a park of historical preservation really is. And I think that, just my opinion, that the $25 million rough estimate that has been spent on it has been spent with the desire to create a attraction of heritage that speaks to who the people of Port Alberni are. And I think that the error of post-industrial cities, of which Port Alberni is but one of thousands across the continent, if not the world, is that somehow other individuals in the world will be as interested in our heritage and hold it as dear to our hearts as we do. We love our heritage. We are a city of individuals that have longstanding generational families in this community. And so they are attached to these things. But that doesn't mean that someone from Lowell, Massachusetts will come and want to view and spend money and contribute to the economy of preserving our heritage when they are actively preserving their own. So I again reiterate that we should not be continually siphoning off funds from the public reserves to pay for something that will always simply siphon off public funds and has really no prospect of producing an economic activity. What it can produce is an amenity that's valuable as a park and a historical site that is safe and people can see from a distance. Contrast this with the Somas Park, which we are not at the present time, contributing money towards to keep clean and garbage away. We have fenced, fenced, fenced it off in the sense of closing the gate. And yet, that is a park that does produce an economic impact of significance. And presumably, And presumably, as the previous speaker said earlier on tonight, one that is of somewhat measurable economic impact. So to continue in the path that we're taking, I think it's an unwise economic activity that the council might decide to spend money and lose money instead of keep money and gain money. Because it's all about, at the end of the day, the budget and the tax dollars and the changes that Mr. McGifford would like us to make. So I I not to waste council's time or committee's time, but I would make a motion at this point in time, which may be voted down or may not even be seconded, but I would make a motion that the committee recommend to council to not expend any more tax dollars, budget dollars, in repairs or upgrades to the historic area of McLean Mill. And B, for the purposes of safety, fence it to the extent that it would exclude individuals from accessing the historic area and creating a liability to the city.
Thank you. Is there a seconder?
I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded from Counselor Sola. And if we could just have clarification, so the historic site you're talking about, are you talking about not spending any money? I mean, or treating it as a park? No money on repairs, but operations still are fine? Maybe you could just clarify before we go into discussion and then I will go to our CAO for a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I may have it wrong because I haven't seen the actual drawings on a map, but my understanding is the historic zone is essentially the buildings and building structures that could be fenced in a manner to exclude people's access. And that the rest of the park is the non-historic zone, which people can still continue to access. And I'm not making any motions about that because my understanding is they're not in need of repair at this time. But.
But just to, sorry, more specifically, my question, so you're only talking about repairing the buildings, not talking about ongoing maintenance of the just not maintenance of the buildings, recognizing that there is park maintenance, grounds maintenance that goes on out there?
Well, that's a good question. That's why you're in that chair. I mean, I suppose I I'm just hypothesizing now and probably it would be much better to have input from the CAO or from managers that are familiar with that area. I mean, I suppose that there is lawn to be mowed that would be behind a fence. So I'm not sure what the budget for that is, but I I would be specifically, though, talking about no repairs, no capital improvements, no capital repairs.
So let's take that as the motion, if that's okay with you. And I'm going to go to our CAO for for discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I I think I understand what Counselor Petola is is going after there. Again, the the first recommendation on this report is $50,000 just to make the site safe. So fence it off, remove things that are at a danger to the public, removing that for our liability to the city. Our operational funds that have already been approved for this year, look after maintaining the grounds in the sense of mowing lawns, making sure there's no liability to ruts in the ground, et cetera. There is no capital repairs to any of the equipment out there currently budgeted for. That that is the area where the manager of facilities said if we aren't planning on doing any capital repairs, then don't make the motion on B because to create that five-year plan would take some time and we could have that time spent on something else if we aren't willing to commit those funds. So the other motion that I believe that you were reading there, Counselor Petola, was the one to not do any of this and then close it off to the public, which I don't think was your intent. I think your intent was the first one. But I I hope I clarified a little bit of of what this is. This is no repairs in a non-historic area. This is just in the historic area on on the site.
Counselor Petola.
Yes, well, apparently I'm not clarifying very well, but I am drawing a distinction between historic site, that I understand needs repairs, and the non-historic site that is a park that requires operational maintenance, as all parks do.
Building is the is the non-historic site? The main building?
Yep. Yeah. A park with a building.
Counselor Sola.
I actually agree with you, just so you know. I just wanted to say I agree because, I mean, we've been talking about this round and round for over a decade, right? And decades, it feels like. And, you know, again, safety, but there's obligations too we have at the park. And I'm referring to there's weddings that are booked and different things that are happening. And I have no problem fencing off because we're just there's so much work and so much money that's got to be invested in repairing these buildings. If you you can, people can go to our agenda and take a look and and there's pictures if you haven't been to the to McLean's Mill. And you're just like, whoa. And so anyways, I just wanted to say that, Madam Mayor, I have no problem doing that. And but I again recognize that McLean's Mill with the with the Chamber of Commerce, what they're doing, just letting people walk through it and and the camping that's if there's camping still going on and weddings and other events that are happening, I think there's some good value there. But we also remember, we also have other parks in the ACRD and you're absolutely right regarding the the last speaker. That's those are my comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I missed you, Counselor Verbrugge. I let Counselor Sola go again. Go ahead.
Just an observation I made a couple, three weeks ago. I toured the I believe it's Duncan where they got the logging on the side. And some of there are a lot of people were there and I asked and they at $16 a head for an adult, they had 65,000 visitors last year. And I don't know how much the kids paid and whatnot, but let's run on the million dollars admission. And and most of it was static. They had a little train, diesel-powered train, and it just went and and people telling you what you're looking at and then I'll sort of. Could McLean's Mill, we we can't re we can't build it again. We can maintain what we have, but but it all costs money, okay? A million dollars a year might help, but that's on the side of the highway. We're not on the side of the highway. Lots of pros and cons, but could we is it possible to restructure it? I think the the Chamber of Commerce is on the right track to make it static. Just just an observation.
Thank you. Great comments. I will just say that we've probably had this discussion lots of times, our last council, our council before, our council before. There's no easy solution here. My thoughts are that it's not the right time for this motion specifically. I agree with, you know, some of the comments that have been made, I think, on on all of the sides. But I do think, and as I've said, I think the Chamber of Commerce is doing a great job of bringing the site back to life. So I would rather defer this until we have further discussions with the Chamber of Commerce about what the future of of that contract is going to be and, you know, contracts. So that would next steps would probably be an in-camera discussion to determine some of those next steps. I think there's a lot of potential futures for this site. There is a potential future where it is a static site with much better signage than it has today with much, you know, we've talked about there being like old videos or old like images from the museum. And we really, I think some of that has been slightly improved, but it really is not like at the level where it could be. We could fully restore it to, you know, heritage status as the buildings degrade. I I don't think anyone's talking about trying to make the mill run again, and I don't think that that's probably even potentially doable in in considerations. But I think all options should be considered, and I think they should be considered alongside each other and with some degree of cost in mind. I don't think we should have this discussion about whether we're gonna, you know, ever invest basically again in McLean Mill in the historic site without determining if we're gonna have a contractor out there or not a contractor, have a contractual agreement out there with somebody to run it. I think those conversations go alongside. I'd love to hear what their vision is as well for like, you know, what are people coming out there to visit? And, you know, I have said many times publicly that the heritage out there is not of interest to me. It's not of interest to people in my family. Like, I don't find it interesting. But I know that a lot of people in our community do. And I know that I hugely value that site as a park that's taken care of. And I would be really interested to see like a cost comparison for what does an average park with a building on it in the city of Port Alberni cost versus McLean Mill? Because I think we are getting reasonable value out of our contract with the chamber for the output that we get from that contract. And even if we do consider it a park rather than a historic site and we still continue to make some historical improvements and, you know, what that might be just taking care of buildings so they don't fall down, or it might be fencing them off and and putting up better signage so that people can view it as it is and and learn and understand about it. But there's going to be a cost regardless unless we fence this McLean Mill off so you can't visit it. So I think I've accepted that there's going to be a cost. Let's figure out what value we want to get from that cost and figure out what site we want to have. I completely hear your Counselor Petola. You don't want to invest in the buildings. I don't really want to invest in the buildings either personally like, but I think there might be some minor investments that we might want to make. I know that when I was first in early in my first term as mayor, we were there was a proposal to fully restore to heritage value one of the buildings, the first one when you walk in on the left-hand side, the shop in the back that was falling over. And it was going to be extremely expensive and we that triggered a lot of discussion about how to take care of that building. And what ended up happening was like restoring it as much as possible, making it safe and like making it something that people can still see and look at in a way and understand that it's heritage without it meeting the heritage designation. So I think that there are ways, and that was done, if I recall, like for a fraction of the price, like it was pretty reasonable. And so I don't want to commit to making no improvements to buildings out there. I think that we can take care of the buildings in a way that restores them. But I think we should do that with a vision of what is actually long-term going to be happening out there. So I think it's just too soon to have this conversation. I'm going to vote against it. And then I'm gonna suggest that we make the first motion and then I'm probably going to just put forward a motion to defer the next one, which is on putting forward directing staff to to implement or to build a plan for restoring and repairing the buildings. I think that at least keeps this as an agenda item, but gives us more context and and time to discuss it in a way where we have all of the information. Counselor Sola.
So, Madam Mayor, why don't we just defer the motion that he that was on the table?
I know that that's an option. I personally don't like that option because the motion is to end spending. And while I appreciate the intent of that, I think I think that probably has implications for our contractor. It probably has, it puts at risk future bookings they may have for weddings, which I think are valuable out there. I think it sends a signal that I'm not personally ready to send yet, although I would like to limit spending as much as possible. I think if we leave a motion in place that says we're basically done out there, it sends a really strong message to the community that I don't think we're quite ready to send at this point. So my preference is that we vote on it. If somebody would like to move to defer it, then certainly everyone has that ability. Counselor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I actually like the motion, but I do feel like there's a couple of things that I would like to see happen before we end up at that point, including making sure that we understand how it will affect the current contractor and 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 just taking that into our considerations, right? I I think that it may not affect them significantly and maybe this is they're going to be able to continue operating and maybe that's another discussion to happen down the road. In any case, I think what we do all agree on is the fence and we can start there. And maybe we we do. I know, I know. But anyway, so, yeah, I guess we have, we're going to vote on it now. I would like I would like to have this discussion again in the near future. But I guess I, yeah, we'll see how this goes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rob.
I just want to clarify that the fencing listed in option one is only to fence around the sawmill proper and green chain. There is many other structures on the site that that would not encompass those.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we are going to vote on the motion put forward by Counselor Petola. Are there any questions on the motion or any clarification needed? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Opposed. Motion defeated. Counselor Dame, would you like to read the first motion or an alternative?
I'll read the first motion that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct staff to install a fence around the McLean Mill National Historic Site for $50,000 with funding from the McLean Mill Reserve.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Mealy. Any more discussion on this? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just as we heard from Mr. Cranville, the the fence itself is $20,000, is that correct? And then there's a whole list of of other stuff that goes into the $50,000. So it's not just to install a fence around McLean's Mill, it's to recommend removing the train platform, mold abatement, removing debris around the C can, installing new locks. So so the the fence itself is 20, but if I'm not mistaken, sorry, perhaps.
Through the chair, we should have just replaced the full motion on the report with the motion that was here because this one talks about the fence where the one in the report actually talks to the safety upgrades at McLean Mills for the $50,000. So the 20,000 was a previous edition of this report, didn't get changed on the agenda before it was actually put in. So maybe I can get Sarah to bring up the motion that is on the agenda so everybody can see that.
Thank you. So the motion is that the committee of the whole, sure, yep, recommend that council direct staff to complete safety, well, maybe, upgrades to the McLean Mill National Historic Site for $50,000. And I'll just pop it up here. Nope. Just a moment.
Okay, so I made a motion. Was it seconded?
It was, yes.
Okay, then. I I like the motion other than the amount being incorrect, though I'm not sure that I want to move that we repair everything. I just want to put a fence up. So I think I'm going to stick with my motion, but I'm going to move that we amend the $50,000 to $20,000.
Okay. Is there a seconder for the amendment? Seconded by Counselor Mealy. And I'll go to our CAO.
Through the chair, the reason why we amended the report is it's required $50,000 to make the site safe. So if we only do the fencing around the green chain area and we don't remove the platform by where the train used to pull in, it is still an unsafe site and I wouldn't recommend that we'd have to restrict public access to some areas.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the work just because just needed the clarification. So I am going to vote for the amendment, but just to let people know that I will not voting for the motion and we go back. And I would like to see all the safety work done as well. But if we're going to go in order, I would change the I would still change the amendment to 20,000 to have the proper motion on the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Dame.
At this point, maybe I should just withdraw the amendment and the both motions and we can just start over again. Willing to do so.
If the seconder of the amendment and the motion are okay with that, we're going to just do this in a nice way and start over. I see heads nodding, so unless Counselor Petola's opposed to that process, he'll tell me. Thank you. Okay, let's start fresh. Counselor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's try again. I moved that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct staff I moved that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council direct staff to complete safety upgrades to the McLean Mill National Historic Site for $50,000 with funding from the McLean Mill Reserve.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Dame, seconded by Counsel Mealy. Discussion. Counsel Dame.
Yeah, thanks. And I'm very actually disappointed to make that motion because I just wanted a fence put up, and now I'm realizing that, yes, it is more complicated, which I did read the report. And that's what Counsel Petola's point, his first motion is that this is not just a fence. We are investing in these buildings immediately, not long-term. So, yeah, it's, it's, I'm, we're still doing more than kind of I hoped we would do without discussion with the Chamber and maybe seeing if we could keep it more minimal, but here we are, so.
Yeah, so I think that's a really good point. And if we go through the list, just, you know, there's mold abatement of the McLean House, removing debris and C can safety, obviously, installing new locks. There's vegetation control, roof cleaning on various roofs. So I think, in my opinion, there are a few things here that while they are safety in some way, they are not necessarily the most immediate safety issues. What I would recommend is that we all give this a little more thought, and that we bring the discussion to the, the meeting of council, as we know that this is coming back to council regardless. And if, if any members of council want to make changes to the list or change the amounts, then that can certainly be done then. Passing it forward tonight gives that opportunity for us to have thought and then bring back more discussion if needed. Okay, great. Okay, any other con, are you sure? Go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry for all the confusion. It was a report that we were trying to finish at the later times to make sure it made the agenda. We could also bring forward for council a clearer definition of things that would have to be mitigated without, to actually, what am I trying to say here? Without fixing buildings up necessarily, but mitigating the risks. Like, I know that the platform by the train station has to be removed. That is a hard and fast cost that is a safety risk. Fencing of the green chain is another one. There may be some of these that may lower the cost, that may be about the buildings. If you would prefer, we could, we could bring some more information on that.
Well, in my opinion, the report is clear and itemizes all of the, the pieces there. So if council wants additional details on any of the items and wants to pull any of them out or have discussion about that, I mean, that could be done now, but it also could be done at our regular meeting of council. So I don't personally see more information as needed on, on this piece of it. Okay, okay. Seeing, Counsel Solda.
I'll make this quick. Or physically, we can go and take a tour of McLean's Mill and take a look what needs to be done, too.
Yes, great idea. Okay, seeing no other comments on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for the great discussion. I'm gonna move that the Committee of the Whole defer Item B in a motion as it stands. So I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna have to move it and then defer it? No, we can just move to defer it, right? Because I don't want it to just not be read. Okay, sorry, seconded by Counsel Solda. I don't want it to not be read. I'd like it to be in motion, and I will say defer it until an additional conversation can be had with, with the Chamber of Commerce. Moved and seconded. And just want to say that I think, long, but we've had great discussion tonight. This is a challenging issue, and I think there are many paths forward. And I think this is not going to be an issue that we make a motion and decide the future. This is gonna be another one of those issues that we request additional information for on multiple options. Bring it back to Committee of the Whole, have more discussion, bring it back to council, et cetera. Because, you know, frustrating as it may be, the history of the site, it is an important piece of the community to a lot of people, and I think it can't, it's not a, it's not a decision that's gonna be made in one meeting. So I would just encourage council to think about the information you might need in order to explore the various options that might exist for how we take care of that site in the future, and be ready to request that information. Give staff a heads up if there, if there are items that are kind of readily available. Because I think that if we can have a good discussion with specific requests at our next, or the next time we discuss this, we can make some good motions and, and move forward and maybe make a decision one day. Okay, on the motion to defer, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much for all of the patience and the report. Onto council procedures by law amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's report proposes amendments to the council procedures by law. These amendments aim to update procedures related to governance, improve meeting efficiency, and clarify roles and responsibilities within council. The amendments include the introduction of a consent agenda, updates to the deputy mayor provisions, and various procedural adjustments concerning notice of motion and meeting conduct. And most importantly, I have added in council's favorite, defer a motion. So we can make it official. Thank you, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions or take any other recommendations.
Thank you very much. Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate this. Just wanted to get some clarification, just consent agenda. So from what I understand, it is if we make a decision here at the Committee of the Whole unanimously, that when it comes to council, it will be streamlined a little bit more. But the ability to still pull it out, much like correspondence for information, we're listed A through F, and a counselor can say Item E, I want to talk about that. So I just want to make sure, just because consent agenda, it's the first time I've really heard of that, but I just want to make, make clarification.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's correct. Counsel Mealy, you are able to pull any items out at any time. It's a matter of process to streamline, but certainly able to adjust that at any time.
Thank you. Other discussion? Hagerd.
Thank you. Something for clarification for electronic participation. It says, remove the restriction preventing the presiding member from participating electronically, thereby enabling the chair to participate remotely. Now, if you're the chair and you're zooming in, you can't see when people have their hands raised, so I thought that was why we had somebody else chair the meeting. So it's just saying that they can chair the meeting if they zoom in?
I've already given that feedback. That it would be very difficult to chair a meeting from outside of the room. That said, there are some tech thoughts about how we could do that. That also said, personally, I think you just would not get the same result. So my preference was going to be that we remove that. I think that what we should add in is the ability to call an electronic-only meeting. And maybe we only add that as, well, I think, in theory, we only add that as an in-camera option. And I know we've had in-camera meetings where we've thought, you know, we could all be here virtually instead of, instead of in-person, and it could make sense in some circumstances. However, in the case of COVID, where we had to, and I've already had this discussion with Sarah, in the case of COVID, we had to very quickly switch to electronic meetings, and we didn't have the ability to actually do that. The province stepped in and allowed it, although there was at least one meeting where I chaired the meeting from my, by myself, sitting in this room with like no one else here, because everyone else was at home before we got the ability from the province. And when I was discussing this with staff recently, I thought, well, there could be other localized, like, other situations where the province doesn't step in in a broad way and give that ability, where it would be nice for us to determine that in very special circumstances, we are able to have a virtual-only meeting. There could be some other type of like, you know. Yeah, exactly. So I think that it would be nice if our procedures by law gave the ability for us to, for us to call an electro, electronic-only meeting, but only to be used in special circumstances. And I think the comment around the chair needs to be removed, and that the intent to be that we're all in-person or all virtual. I've been in a lot of hybrid meetings. I mean, even the regional district having hybrid meetings, it's really nice because the, the area is large, and it's nice that people don't have to travel, but you really don't get the same type of meeting when it's half-virtual. So I think it's important that it's one or the other, and, and my proposed changes would be that we add in the ability to have, to call virtual meetings and build a process for that in special circumstances, and that we remove the part about the chair. I guess I make that an amendment. But we haven't moved the motion yet, so we'll just list it later. Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to Counsel Hagerd for pulling that out. That was something else I wanted to talk about. I truly believe that the chair should be in-person, no matter what. That's my take on it. I'd also like us to consider the elimination of the provision limiting members to a maximum of four meetings per calendar year. That's too low electronically, that's too low. We have to give other counselors the opportunity to have their life as well, but I do think that there should be a need to have counselors and the mayor show up in-person, of course. There, so the four meetings per calendar year is really weird because we have, you know, two council meetings every month, give or take, and then some, some Committee of the Whole meetings as well. So four out of 30 meetings, 40 meetings, that doesn't seem like a lot. So I, I, I would agree that we could up that, that number, but I wouldn't want to create an environment where, and nobody here, I'm not accusing anybody in this room of doing that, and you're all, everybody shows up when they can, obviously, but to create an environment where a counselor or the mayor, not, I'm sorry, the counselors elected could just sit at home all year and, and do it electronically, and I don't think that's fair. So, and again, I would, again, I go back to, I would like the chair, my personal preference is I'd like the chair to be in-person, even if it's, like you said during COVID, you were the only one here. Everybody can, but, but again, to properly see, to interact with staff and see votes, absolutely have to be in-person.
Yeah, agree completely. So I don't know what the, I don't know if even having a number is correct, or having a statement that all members of council should be in-person when possible to be in-person. I, I mean, I think I've probably been virtual for more than four meetings this year, right? Because, I mean, just family and then also traveling for conferences and stuff. So I think that it would almost, having the limit of four almost encourages us to not attend, but rather to just miss a meeting, which is not ideal. So I don't know what the correct way to put that is, but Counsel Mealy.
Yeah, thank you, Madam. That's exactly the point, is, is if you get to a point, why even log in? If, if it's your, if you've missed four meetings, you've done electronically, why log in then? Because now you're just going against the bylaw. So what I would, what I would say would be to allow members a maximum of half of the meetings per calendar year. But if there is a need for more meetings, such as family or anything like that, that council can vote on allowing that counselor the extra time needed.
Yeah, I think something like that could work, for sure. Counsel Solda.
I hate Zoom meetings. I prefer in-person, and I was elected to be here and be in-person. And if I am on holidays or something like that, understandable. And it could be at permission, if I'm gonna be gone for four meetings in a row, permission of council, right? I mean, just to let them know that I won't be here. We know that we had counselors that were off because of being in the hospital. That's a different story. So, yeah, I'm not supportive, like, half of the meetings be here and half not at all. You know, I think, yeah, the people want to see us here, they want to see that. I love that quack-quack anyways. Anyways, so I just wanted to bring that, that up. I understand, you know, if you have a home life, you do a virtual, I mean, which is fine, but anyways, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So what I would suggest, and I'm gonna maybe, let's finish any more discussion we want to have on potential changes, but my suggestion would be that we just bring this back, we ask staff to take away our discussion, bring back options and recommendations, and then we bring this back to our next Committee of the Whole. There's no urgency to get this done. Let's just discuss it again. And I do just want to say that I think it is really important that, that we don't necessarily even have any limit, but that we have a statement that we all are following. Yeah. Counsel Hagerd.
I wonder if it could be something like counselors are encouraged to attend in-person wherever possible, and just not put a number on it? Because there is circumstances, for example, you know, a few years ago, I was on council and I had sudden surgery, and I missed three meetings, and I was told I had to become in-person to the next meeting, otherwise I'd be off council. And I came to the meeting in person, and I was in a lot of pain, and I didn't think I was gonna make it through the meeting. So there's always circumstances where you can't come. So I don't think there should be any number on it, just a statement that council members are encouraged to attend in-person wherever possible, something to that effect.
Yes. Let's think more about it, and the only reason I say that is some counselors may just, like, not this council, we all want to be here, but who knows what the next council or a future council is? And so if there is the ability to sit at home, people may. It is easier. It's easier to be at home. So I, I think that there, we might want to have a process around it, and Sarah might be able to come back with some ideas based on this discussion. So I think it's just always important to remember that when we do these things, we are doing them for ourselves, absolutely, but we're doing them for councils of the future, and we don't know who may be here. Counsel Solda, and then Counsel Dame.
I just caution, you could be opening up Pandora's Box for the future, and I know a counselor who doesn't ever attend his council meeting, he does it virtually, and I don't agree with that. And I'm not talking about in Port Alberni. And I just don't agree with that, totally.
Yeah, no, agree completely with you. Counsel Dame.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Not to belabor, belabor the, the discussion here, but I, I feel like it's worth pointing out that I, I often have people ask me, why is it that somebody can live outside of the community and still be elected to your council? And the answer that I always give is because democracy doesn't seek to limit who the people can elect. And so in this case, I think that you don't want to take too much from the ability for the public to elect somebody who may be traveling a lot, or on the road, or have life circumstances that prevent them from being here. And, and so if the public chooses to elect somebody who has to attend virtually most of the time, that they should be allowed to do so, and I wouldn't want to greatly limit that. Yeah, it could have implications and consequences if somebody decided to abuse that, but once again, that would have to be an issue that the public would take up during the next election. And I don't think it's for us to say, no, we only want people who can be here personally. That's for the public to decide.
That's an excellent point. I still don't like it, but excellent point. Okay, I am going to move that we defer this to the next Committee of the Whole, or, you know, to Committee of the Holes down the road is fine, but reasonably near Committee of the Whole, with a request for just additional information. Seconded by Counsel Petola, seeing no other discussion on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. And municipal alcohol policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So following a presentation by the medical health officer on alcohol consumption, harms, and interventions, council directed administration to work with Island Health to develop a draft municipal alcohol policy, which is now before you today for consideration. This policy aims to create a framework for responsible use of alcohol at public events within the city of Port Alberni and public spaces. While drafting a municipal alcohol policy, it is essential to strike a balance between public health priorities and economic stimulation. As such, you will note that further to the draft policy before you, additional measures suggested by the medical health office have been included within the report that the committee may want to consider. Thank you, and I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just on the very last page, it is Appendix 1, the event signage list is, and it says that the event organizers must display the following information near each bar area. Are they going to have it as a big sign? Is that what we're, we're thinking of, assigned by the bar, or do they have kind of a little bit of leeway? Because obviously, the, the cost would be up to the event organizers to put this information.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Chair, there would be opportunities, there's a number of different, you'll see in some municipal alcohol policies that there's various prescriptive signage that you have to have. We do not have that in ours, so it is up to Counsel or the- We do not have that in ours, so it is up to council or the committee if they want to suggest those prescriptive guidelines. At this time, we do have it a bit more flexible.
Thank you. Counselor Dame.
Thanks. I just have a clarification question. If I'm understanding correctly, so this applies to events, not establishments, right? Is that, where, for instance, the elimination of last call are, would be prohibited. Are we saying that at events that serve alcohol, or are we saying that at restaurants and bars and breweries, and nobody can have a last call?
Thank you, yes. No, it would just be for events at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved that the committee of the whole recommend council approve municipal alcohol policy number 3002-9.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Hagerd. Seeing no discussion on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Perfect. Onto question period, an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the committee, and for anyone participating electronically, you can use the raise your hand feature. Would anyone like to ask questions today? Joseph.
Hi, everybody. A long one again. Just clarification, was there anything discussed tonight that was decided on and voted on tonight that was finalized tonight?
No, nothing is ever finalized at a committee of the whole meeting.
Exactly. Yep, good. Just want to make sure, because it almost appears that way, but, so I wanted to clarify that. I misunderstood, so I figured that was the case, so thank you. Another question I have is not on the agenda and not part of tonight's meeting, but I'm just curious about what they call closed meetings or in-camera meetings. I think there's municipal, whatever you call it, procedure for that, you have to be followed. And I'm just curious on that. It's only, it says here, all, all meetings of local government, elected and appointed bodies, committees, commissions, and other subsidiary bodies must be open to the public unless authorized to be closed or in-camera. Under certain circumstances, elected officials may close a meeting or part of a meeting by passing a resolution in an open meeting that sets out the bias or basis for the closing of the meeting. So I'm just curious, in, in camera meetings, those hopefully are really followed really closely, and it's not things that should not be discussed and there are not being. And I'm just wondering how that is, who's there to put, I don't want to use the word police, but to police that, to make sure that that's the case, that it's only things that are supposed to be.
Thank you. So you, just for a part of your comment and question, you can look on the city's website to see all of our agendas, both open and closed. What will, you, you will see on the special in-camera closed meetings is the agenda page, which lists the reasons why we go in-camera. If you attend one of our in-camera meetings, you will see that the door is open until we make that motion, and then we, excuse anyone who has chosen to attend, and we close that door. So we do start in an open meeting every time. In terms of who polices it, our corporate officer is in all of those meetings and is responsible for ensuring that we stay on task, and we do not talk about anything that is off the agenda. Even some items naturally will be on an in-camera agenda, but have corresponding pieces that are public items or that have already been spoken about in public. So our corporate officer certainly is responsible for that. However, I, as chair of the meeting, police that as well, and, and often do keep council on track, because it is easy when items are complicated and have public pieces and private pieces to easily just sort of start to, you know, wander with questions into the public piece. So frequently, I will say that part of the item is a public item, and we can't have that discussion today, and then council goes back to the in-camera piece, and then we often have the public discussion at the following council meeting. So we're very on top of our process here, and you'll note as well that we do release from in-camera regularly, and I think we put out our, our status report of in-camera motions once a year as well.
Right, thank you. Thank you. I have another one that's kind of off the topic completely, but Roland Art Center, which is no longer, at least the one on Eighth. And I'm just curious what the plans are for that. It's, 1914 was the year the house was built, and the gardens, which were elaborate, Japanese garden, community garden, a children's garden, native plant area, which is all kind of just being let go, sort of. And also, I think there was a dedication to a sister city in Japan, part of that process was that. And there was also some plaques for some pioneers, I think, that were in Port Alberni, that were all part of that garden, a gazebo, that sort of thing. I think it was a fantastic site. I'm just curious what is happening with the Roland Art Center.
I don't believe any firm plans are able to be commented on really at this point. Of course, we built the childcare facility, intending for it to be an arts-focused childcare facility, which it is, but assuming that the tenant would be there alongside it, and there would be collaboration on ongoing operations, and the two would, would benefit each other. The tenant has moved to a wonderful new space that we also own, and so that leaves that site without a tenant. And there's unfortunately not really anything additional I'm able to comment on at this point.
Yeah, thank you. The other gardens are amazing there, and now it's just, it's all overgrown, and it's a shame to see. Anyhow, just, it, I think a lot of the public, I mentioned to somebody the other day, the fact that the Roland Art Center was, and they went, what? It was news to them, and, which was a surprise to them. So I have another question. This one may be inappropriate, so you can just say, we can't accommodate you on that one. And I came here tonight, my car is in the shop. I decided to take public transit. In order to get here by six, I would have to leave my house just after four, so I decided to walk. So, which was a 50-minute walk, not bad. I didn't think you'd go this late. So does anybody live in Northport that can give me a ride home? Thank you.
We've got lots of people here who can give you a ride home, for sure. All right, thank you. Would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by Counselor Soltta, seconded by Counselor Dame on the motion, all in favor. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.